Good morning. My name is Don Michaelman, and I want to welcome you to the October 13th, 2022, public hearing of the City of Prescott Planning Commission. I'd like to note that Councilmember Rusing is attending here, and Councilmember Montoya on that is with us, too. What I will do is, why don't we introduce ourselves first? And we have one of our, oops, council member on Zoom, so I'm going to start off with Sam. Stan?
Yeah, Commissioner on Zoom.
Commissioner, sorry about that. I promoted him already. Jeez.
That was nice.
So, Stan, would you like to introduce yourself?
Then again, maybe not.
Yes.
He's not on Zoom.
He's not?
No.
All right. Stan may be joining us shortly, and we will be notified when he does. We'll start with the commission members up here. Susan, would you like to start?
Good morning. My name is Susan Graham.
Good morning. I'm Tom Hutchison.
Ted Gamboji.
Tom Riley.
Butch Tracy. Good morning.
Okay. Staff members will introduce themselves when they come up to make a presentation or discuss items there. This is an open public hearing and is being taped, recorded, and videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public, local cable and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. The number of Commissioner present will potentially be seven and require a majority vote of those present to pass a motion. As some individuals may be attending this meeting remotely, all parties wishing to be heard, including commission members, are required to state their name prior to speaking in order to ensure accurate minutes. Members of the public, when called upon, are required to state their name and address for the record so that we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them at a later date if necessary. I also would like to request that you check your cell phones and make sure they're on mute or off so we don't have an accident during the meeting here on that. First item on the agenda is the approval of executive session minutes from August 25th, 2022, and regular session minutes from September 8th, 2022. I'm going to take these separately, and we'll deal with the executive session first. Is there a motion on this?
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a seconded. Any further discussion?
I wasn't there, so I'm not going to vote.
Okay.
Okay, I just need to make a clarification. So, two sets of minutes, executive session from August 25th, 2022, and regular session minutes from September 29th, 2022.
And we're doing them separately. We're doing them separate.
Okay, so we're doing the August right now?
The executive session first.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And I'll note that you recuse yourself.
Okay. Would you call the roll then?
Sure. Susan Graham?
Approve.
Tom Hutchison?
I approve.
Butch Tracy?
Approved.
Stan Galagoski? Don't think he's there yet. So Ted Gamboji?
Approved.
Don Michaelman?
Approved.
Approved, 5-0.
Next would be the regular session minutes from September 8th, 2022. Are there any corrections to be made? If no corrections, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Butch Tracy, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If no further discussion, Haley?
Yes, Susan Graham?
Approve.
Thomas Hutchison?
I approve.
Tom Riley?
Approve.
Butch Tracy?
Approved.
Ted Gamboji?
Approved.
Don Michaelman?
Approved.
Passes 6-0. And can I just get clarification on the executive session? Who made the first and the second? First, second? Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is LDC 22-001, continuation of the public hearing of land development code amendment to Section 2.1.4 and Section 5.2 to replace the Airport Noise Overlay District, ANO, with a new Airport Vicinity Overlay District, AVO, criteria, and create a district boundary. George?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is a continuation of public hearing, so staff has a brief presentation, but then we want to give you opportunity to go to the public for their comments. So I'm going to run through a few slides from planning, and then our airport director has a few slides to also run through, and then we'll turn it back to you to call the public into the conversation. We're going to talk a little bit about four things in my presentation, three things, actually, just what we've done so far, what's currently on the books. It's one thing that we've kind of haven't talked a lot about since about the first meeting where we brought it to you as to what we actually have in the code today, and then what we've done between the time we started this, when we started this, up to today, just to give you an idea of what the public outreach has been and what the opportunity for public comment has been over that time. So a little bit of the history of what's gone on over time. First thing specifically adopted by the city within the last decade or so, two decades or so, we adopted a specific area plan. That area plan covers a much larger area than the actual airport, but the airport is centered in it and has an outsized role in it. Specific area plans are adopted for relatively large geographic areas. They're sort of a subset of the area that's covered by the city's overall general plan, and that area plan will touch on many of the things that are touched on in a general plan, everything from transportation to land use planning to more specific items like water and sewer infrastructure. The City of Prescott has three specific area plans. The airport plan is the newest and the largest. Back in 2002, there were some amendments to the city's land development code when we re-adopted a code that replaced the old zoning code, and that code had specific criteria. The current airport noise overlay, you mentioned, an ANO, was put in place at that time. That was part of the overall adoption of a zoning code for the city that replaced a much older code that began and first adopted in 1953. 2003, we adopted the first general plan. It was approved by the voters, enacted by the city council. That was the first plan under the state's current rules for smart growth. Prior adopted plans were under a different set of rules under the state legislation. 2011, as part of a master plan for the airport, there was a section of that master plan that included land use controls or protections recommended to the city as part of the plan. 2015, we re-adopted our general plan because about every five years you start looking at it, and about every 10 years you start updating it. So about 10 years later, we adopted a new general plan, had many of the same criteria in it. 2017, we made some amendments to ASAP that were part of the adoption of the Deepwell Master Plan. They were done simultaneously with that.
George, could you explain holistic land use?
That's what we thought.
Yeah. So that language is often used by private planners to represent something. From the city's perspective, everything we do in planning is holistic. We look at the whole picture. We look at the overall coverage of everything. We look at the adverse impacts and the positive impacts, and we look at whether impacts happen here or there. So that language was proposed by a planning firm representing Deepwell and was incorporated into the plan by action of the city. So its purpose was to say that if you have a plan that looks at everything, like most of our zoning and planning documents do, that it had different criteria.
Nice recovery.
Was that good enough? I could go on for another hour if you want.
Nice recovery.
Thank you.
If ever there was an example of dancing on the head of a pin, that was it.
I'll take that as a compliment. So some of the things that we haven't talked about in a while, we did at the very beginning of the process with you, were what our current controls are under the land development code and the airport noise overlay. So a quick run-through of that is that the noise overlay, surprisingly, is mostly focused on noise. There are some additional requirements that are in there that affect land uses. Those are tied basically to noise impacts on those uses. They are out of date with the current activity at the airport and current planning processes that have occurred in the vicinity airport, so that was the reason we brought forward a proposed airport vicinity overlay district. What we have in place now is outdated. It was originally incorporated into code when it was adopted, so it's from 2002. A lot has changed since 2002 in the vicinity of the airport, and we want to try to address those with the proposals for the AVO that you'll talk about today. The noise contours are, again, pretty much out of date. They don't represent what the current aviation activity shows, so protections provided by them are insufficient. They're within the boundaries of the airport for the most part. There were some residential land use restrictions in the vicinity of the airport, but again, they're partially or mostly based on those noise contours, and as you can see, they don't extend very far out and certainly don't extend to the area that's currently being impacted by the much higher volume of airport operations that we have today. Current code allows for noise mitigation of uses, which is something that is extremely hard for us to follow up on. It's very hard to say you have an ambient noise outside of 60 and you have to have an ambient noise inside of 45 and be able to measure that because you actually have to take measurements all day long, and you have to have specific criteria in the design, and you have to assume no one's opening a door or window. Obviously, that's not practical with Prescott's weather. Most people want to be able to enjoy the outdoors or at least the fresh air. So that was another reason why the AVO makes restrictions a little bit harder, and there's a less mitigation allowed because that mitigation is so hard to enforce. And I apologize. If you have any questions along the way, don't hesitate. Just ask them, throw something, raise your hand, however you want to get my attention. The current airport influence area is, based on a separate document that was adopted by the city way back in about 2001 or '02, that area already requires navigation easements of developments within it, and as we've told you before, and just as a reinforcement for anyone who may not have participated previously, our intention with the AVO is to use that same boundary. So it already has a requirement in place that impacts private property development, so the AVO boundary is that same boundary you see there. Did you have questions, sir?
Yeah, could you point out that boundary that we're seeing?
So it's this exterior boundary. It's been in place for about 20 years with the city, and everything within that boundary falls within some requirements associated with state law and local regulation requiring navigation easement. So it affects all of these areas already for the easement requirement. Did you have a question, sir?
Part of that area is outside the city limits.
That's very correct.
And if they want to come into the city, we have some negotiating factors to do with the property owner. How can we, can we enter, if we decide to proceed on this, an agreement with the other governmental entities to recognize this?
In the early 2000s, we negotiated with the county and Prescott Valley to agree to the land uses that were established in the airport-specific area plan that we talked about two slides ago. Yes, it's possible to negotiate with them. We can't compel anyone outside of the city to conform to city rules unless they need city services from us, and that is a question we've talked about before. If properties are annexed in in the future, those properties are subject to city rules. If we negotiate with the county or Prescott Valley, although most of the areas outside the city are in the county currently, yes, the county could agree to those rules. If they don't agree to those rules, and again, we can't compel anyone to do it, then properties within the city, we apply the rules to; properties outside the city, we can't apply the rules to. The same thing exists with our general plan. Our general plan boundary map for the, excuse me, for the city to plan, we plan at least a mile beyond our borders on most sides of the city. Excuse me. The planning boundary under state law allows us to plan beyond the borders. We can't enforce that planning unless those properties come in, but the purpose of that planning is the presumption that they will come in someday, and if they do, we already have land use plans in place to help direct what happens. This is exactly the same concept. If someone comes in, we will already have rules in place and processes in place to address the areas near the airport should they come into the city.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. George, could you tell us about the language in the navigation easement? Is it general language that other cities, other municipalities use across the border or is it specific to Prescott?
We've tailored some of the language to be more specific to the area, but navigation easements are kind of like zoning. There's not many flavors of them in the country, so most of the time, the language we use is something that's general. We do it for several reasons. You use language that comes from other municipalities that's already been proven or already been tested, so why create something new that gets tested? And when I say tested, I mean sued.
So it's a recognized document?
It's a recognized document. So we may have some more specifics. Our navigation easement that's proposed to go with this may ask for a few more things that are specific to our airport, but the general document is something that is in common use. We, as planners, try not to invent something brand-new unless there's nothing already out there that works. Again, one of the reasons that we do something like this is to be prepared ahead of time that would apply in that case.
Mr. Chairman. George, Tom Riley, two things. One, has the city begun or contacted the other jurisdictions in the area to begin any kind of negotiation or discussion about the AVO?
Not that I'm aware of, and probably for good reason. We present all of this information to you. The public presents this information to you. It will be this body's job to come out with a recommendation for city council to consider. So what we're presenting to you, we don't know that's what you're going to move forward with. We don't want to initiate a negotiation with another authority until we have a pretty firm idea of what the document will ultimately look like, because we can't get any commitments from them unless we show them what we have. So at this point, I don't believe so. If any other officials here know for sure...
No discussion at all?
I don't believe so.
Oh, hey, by the way, we're doing this thing. We'll let you know when we're done? Okay?
They are aware of it. We notice the county because some of the properties that are within the notice boundary are county-owned, not just in the county, so the county is aware of what we're doing. They got notices, just like private property owners get notices.
Those little cards?
I like those cards.
I'll bet you do. Second thing, navigation easements. It would be nice to get a copy of one, just so I can read it. Now, how are people notified about this navigation easement? At what point in the process of either renting or purchasing does that issue arise?
Part of that is addressed in the proposed AVO language. One of the things that we have in place now, already a requirement, is that at closing, people get a copy of it in their closing documents, you know, that giant stack of things you have to initial. That may not be the only way to do it, and we have some recommendations as part of the language for the AVO that would require a fair notice disclosure, which is somewhat different, earlier in the process, and then the navigation easement being something that is at least made aware of to potential buyers of property earlier in the process. We may have some additional information in the airport's slide presentation that may talk about that, and if not, we can give you some more information or show you the language in the code. At some point after we get through the public hearing part of this, I do have the entire draft code that we can go through section by section if you want to do that.
Well, we can do that. I can go, the fair notice disclosure that you have shown in the information that we just got, the recent, most recent AVO document, basically doesn't do anything else other than say it's got to be included in your CCNRs. So that does very little to notify potential buyers or renters in the area, whether they be residential or commercial. It does very little to notify them. It's, like I said the last time, I said it's sort of a caveat emptor, let the buyer beware. And I think that that's insufficient on our part, and I think that that needs to be strengthened. So that's something that we can discuss perhaps later at some other point, Mr. Chairman, but it's, in my opinion, I think it is a major weakness in the AVO and in our current system as well.
Very good. We can certainly discuss that further.
George?
Sir?
George. Butch Tracy. Do you have any idea when are the CCNRs presented to a potential buyer?
I don't know that specifically. I do know that the CCNRs are adopted and recorded along with a plat. So when the subdivision is created, any CCRs applicable to it have to be recorded with it or simultaneous to it. That makes them a public record. It makes them discoverable during a purchase process or a property investigation process. So it's not something that necessarily gets handed to people, but I would suspect that in the closing documents, again, you're going to get your CCNRs if you purchase property in a subdivision. I did when I purchased my property. They were in there. No one called it out or pointed it out to me, and that is an issue if we talk about it. We do need to keep in mind, how do we enforce whatever we ultimately end up with? So we'll be happy to participate in that discussion later when you're ready.
Thank you, George.
Couple of other provisions. Under the current rules, the residential limitation that we have in the city's current ANO limit residential to the 65 DNL. And as I showed you on the map of that, that basically prohibits people living on the runway or inside the airport fence. So again, the intent at that time and the application of current situation is so different that we need to update, and that was one of the reasons, again, for the AVO being proposed. The interior sound mitigation, I mentioned that already, it's difficult to apply, and it's even more difficult to verify later. The current code came before most of the documents that provided guidance on how to protect the airport. So we have an airport land use plan, again, that was reviewed in 2009. I think the actual implementation date was 11. The general plans, the airport-specific area plans, those documents all followed after the current ANO was adopted. It was adopted in 2002. So updating the city's actual zoning code to more align with the documents that came afterwards, documents we presume had more study and more consideration of the airport as it grew, makes a lot of sense. And again, that is one of the other reasons we've brought forward an AVO. The materials we have on the books are rather out of date. Airport impact zones, safety zones, they were actually part of that airport land use plan. So again, when the ANO was adopted back in 2002, we hadn't adopted anything that showed impact or safety zones. So again, updating the information to take in new data that we have available to us. We've been pretty busy in this process. There's been a lot of conversation and public outreach to try to make sure that everyone who has a voice or has a concern has an opportunity to express that. As you can see, I won't read through all of these, but I'll point out a few of them. First solid concept proposal to the city council was way back in June. That has worked its way through a number of other meetings, including a joint meeting where this body and council met to talk about that concept, followed up with a, basically a one-meeting ad hoc committee jointly staffed by, or jointly composed of council members and planning commissioners, where we went through the process all over again, took direction from that ad hoc committee, and then moved into this body's review process. So we presented to the planning commission in August, and we've gone through a whole series of those presentations. As part of the outreach process and part of the discussion from the commission over time, we held four public open houses at the airport terminal to allow people to come easier. Instead of driving downtown to come down here, they could go someplace closer where most of them live. Majority of the people impacted by this, obviously, are near the airport, so having those open houses there was a positive. It got us four opportunities for public to hear from us and talk to us, to tell us what their concerns are and ask questions about what's being proposed and how it may affect them. They were pretty successful meetings. We had well over 100 people attend. We do have some information that we can provide on specific data if you need it later. That was done as a part of the whole public hearing process to make sure that we, again, gave the public an opportunity. Our first meeting was well-attended. Over 300 people showed up for the first meeting of the planning commission on September, sorry, it wasn't the first meeting, it was the August 25th meeting. A lot of those folks didn't get a chance to talk. They didn't get a chance to express their concerns, and they didn't get a chance to give us input, and the open houses allow that. It allowed those folks who didn't get a chance because of the large crowd or because of long presentations to have a voice. That gave us some pretty good feedback. And then today, October 13th, we're back again having a public hearing for you to take public comment, as well as ask questions of staff. We have a follow-on presentation by the airport director, who will address a few more things for you. I think one of the important parts of the process, though, is an understanding of what you're supposed to be doing here, the purpose of the planning commission, as opposed to what some people may or may not understand, because a lot of people aren't involved in your usual processes. This is an opportunity for them to see what you do, and what you do is review things and make recommendations to the city council based on good planning practice. That's your job. Tell us what is good planning practice. Agree with us or disagree with us, and then make a recommendation to council. Final decision-making is at council. This body makes a recommendation only, and it is important for you to have as much opportunity to talk amongst yourselves and ask us questions as you need to make that recommendation. And to that end, I'm going to cut short my long-winded, short presentation and...
Before you move from that slide, George, if I read that correctly, this is the seventh meeting of some shape or form where we've incorporated public opinion. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
Having me do math this early is not fair. Were there any other questions? I will be available to answer any questions anytime during this process, as will any other staff members here who may have input for you.
Mr. Chairman?
Don.
Commissioner Gamboji, I'd like to point out that there are only three public hearing meetings where public comment was taken, not seven.
The, we're counting the public open house for public comment. I can see the count of seven. The purpose of the open houses was to get public comment, so that counts. The presentations at the previous meetings were information that the public could have. Whether they spoke at those meetings or not, it's different. A public hearing is a requirement of law. It's a little bit different than our normal meetings, but all of our meetings allow public comment. So not to argue any specific point, but there is a lot of opportunity already, and today is further opportunity.
Chairman, I just want to note that Stan's logged in at 9:07.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, I was present from the very beginning of the meeting, just had audio problems, so I've been viewing the entire meeting. I would have abstained from the vote on the executive session because I was not present, but I would have voted in favor of the last meeting agenda minutes.
Okay, thank you. Noted, Stan.
Thank you.
Robin, good morning.
Good morning, members of Planning and Zoning Commission, Chair. I'm Robin Sabata, the airport director. So I wanted to go ahead and give you... So I wanted to go ahead and give you a little bit of update on what's going on, and then we have some ideas and thoughts for you as you move forward, and in fact, some options to consider. So we wanted to go ahead and share some new information with you to respond to a couple of things that, you know, you'd ask us to go ahead and look into, so we've done that. So just so you know, we knew that the draft forecast was going to be forthcoming, and we did receive that. We did forward that to HMMH, which is Harris, Miller, Miller &amp; Hanson. So there's two entities involved in this. The draft forecast was actually created by Kaufman and Associates, so that you know that who does that created this. And this is a forecast that's associated with some of the preliminary planning work for the environmental on the runway extension. So we did complete this. Kaufman and Associates has completed more than 1,200 planning assignments, nearly 600 master plans, and 250 environmental studies, and more than 150 noise and land studies. They're very, very well-respected throughout the industry, so they are the ones that collected the information for the forecast. The forecast was generated by reaching out to users of the airport and asking them if they could tell us what their forecasted activity is for the next five, 10, and 20 years. This was provided to us by numerous airport users, including the seven flight training institutions that operate out of Prescott Airport, the airline, and the U.S. Forest Service, the military, and many others who do operate in and out of Prescott Regional Airport. So that's who completed the forecast. It is considered a draft unconstrained forecast. It's pending FAA approval. An unconstrained forecast says that, you know, everything that we need to do to be able to accommodate this level of activity is essentially reasonably done. Know that these numbers did, were created, as you can see up here at the top in yellow, you can see that this is the base year. The base year was considered 2021, and that was the full calendar year in which we had data. The forecasted year that was used for creating the contour that you can see on the right-hand side is forecast year 2026. And you can see several items were looked at in the forecast: inplanements, annual airport operations, which is broken down here with a subtotal here, and then also based aircraft. So the annual, total annual operations back in 2021 for full calendar year was 311,418. For 2026, it's projected to be 440,500. So that's a pretty good jump. And so that's estimating. We're going to have a lot of continued growth in the future at the airport. We are seeing some of that this year, and it will continue over the next few years. So on the right-hand side, you can see the forecast was used to create the aircraft mix and the estimations for these future noise contours. Again, I said this was done by HMMH, that's Harris, Miller, Miller &amp; Hanson, using the FAA Aviation Environmental Design Tool, or AEDT, latest version. Just to have an idea about Harris, Miller, Miller &amp; Hanson, they've done a lot of airspace planning and air quality analysis, noise and vibration analysis for an untold number of airports. To give you a short list, Sea-Tac, Salt Lake, Houston, Teterboro, New York, Newark, JFK, LAX, Portland, Boston, Oakland, Denver, San Antonio, Fort Lauderdale, the list goes on and on. It's actually an international list as well. They're considered the most reputable noise analysts in the country. So what they did is they took the forecast from Kaufman, and what they did is they put it into that noise model. You can see the generated outcome. Now, the factor that we did include, as we had promised, this shows in red the projected runway extension, right here. This is a runway extension of 2,381 feet for a total length of 10,000 feet. That's an important point here, because what we found out and what we were expecting, and this bears it out, that by doing the runway extension, or in this manner, what we have here is we noticed that in doing this extension right here, look at what happened on the, these are the contours, so this is a 65 DNL contour. In the dashed line right here, this is the 2021, look at how small the increase is. It's quite significant that the extension of this runway, in light of the fact that there's going to be over 100,000 more operations in five years in a calendar, it's really amazing that it's staying pretty close to the contour edge. So that is what we had hoped, and I think this is bearing out, that it looks like it's going to help to mitigate overflight over some of these and noise over some of these homes, which we were concerned about with the increase in operations. Had this not been factored into the model, we can see about this length right here, 80% of the time, now the training aircraft are going to be taking off from back here, a half-mile further away from a lot of the sensitive areas in here. Had this not been done, and this were to continue without the extension, you would likely see all of the noise impacts pushed substantially this direction. This is huge. So I do see where this runway extension, if it is eventually approved and funded, would indeed be really important for the folks in this area. So because this is a little bit of a complicated area, before I go on, do you have any questions about this future forecast contour? Okay, so we can see the rings, 65, 60, and 55. And again, those are average sound levels. So you take noise events, you average this amount over 24 hours, and then again, over a year.
This is Stan Galagaski. I do have a question on this one.
Hi, Stan.
Hi. So the amount of flights that we're talking about, without the airport extension, if we did not have that extension, are they calculating that we would lose a certain number of flights if that were not in play?
Where you would potentially see it is right up here in this area, in the scheduled airline area, and in the air carrier and other taxi. So without the runway extension, it is likely that, you know, flights wouldn't increase because of the fact that additional flights are not subsidized, and they would have to stand on their own and be able to fill those seats. And without the runway extension, particularly in the summer months, many of those aircraft take off with a significant number of unsold seats because of our hot and high-density altitude limitations. The weight restrictions would prevent them from being able to sell those seats, and so we would probably not get additional flights in the future.
Okay.
So that would be, so it would be in this area here. Know that air carrier flights only constitute less than 1% of our total operations, so that isn't going to significantly impact the contours that are generated here.
Gotcha. And my second question is, can you give us a timeline of when you had HMMH and Kaufman conduct this analysis, and when did you receive it?
Okay. Charlie, would you like to step up? I have Charlie here from Dibble, and he can confirm what I'm about to share. So it was about a couple of months ago, we came to the council, and we asked them to move forward with the forecast analysis.
Yeah, it was in August.
In August? Okay, go ahead if you'd like to.
So in August, we commenced on the forecast update, and immediately upon receiving the forecast update, we transmitted that to HMMH so they could run the new noise contours. So it was very sequential, one after another, and we just received them. I don't have the exact date that we received the contours from HMMH, but we could certainly provide that date.
Wasn't it two days ago? A day?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was.
To be specific, I don't look at it.
Can I get his full name for the record again? I'm sorry, this is Charlie McDermott.
Charlie McDermott. I'm the Aviation Planning Manager for Dibble.
Okay, thank you. So I think we received it before noon on Tuesday, the contours.
Okay, thank you.
Robin, earlier you talked about the need for the runway extension, and you used the term "high-density." With this altitude, don't you mean that air is thinner, and that's why we need an extension?
Yes. The term is density altitude, and so that affects the performance of aircraft. It doesn't make them unsafe. It simply says that they need a longer length of runway to take off. There's numerous factors that can affect aircraft performance. One is elevation, another one's humidity, winds can actually do it, but one of the biggest factors is high temperature. And so coupled with the high elevation and the high temperature, we do have a hot and high airport, and that makes it challenging with 7,000, you know, a little, a runway that's under 8,000 feet at this elevation does limit aircraft from being able to take off, particularly, you know, the air carrier cannot sell all its seats in the summer months particularly.
Thank you.
Anything else? I would like to note that the air traffic control tower is closed between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. So the forecasted aircraft operations were adjusted by 11,000 total operations to accommodate those after-hour operations. Know that most aircraft annual operations counts are actually taken by a person, and the control tower clicks every time an aircraft takes off and indicates a departure or an arrival. So after-hours, there is not someone there to do it, so we had to use radar tracking to be able to do that, which we obtained. So another question was asked, is what else are they doing in the state? So what we did is we sought representative airports in overlay districts throughout the state. We actually evaluated, and again, Charlie, if you'd like to step up. We evaluated 14 Arizona airports. We were looking for representative airports that were very similar to Prescott. Would you like to address the similarities?
So we looked at a few airports in Arizona: Falcon Field, Deer Valley, Mesa Gateway, and Chandler airports. They're similar in that they have a similar number of airports, runways, similar operations, and similar land use controls around the airport. And as you can see, for the first one, Falcon Field, they have two runways, parallels. They have land use controls that they protect beyond the 60 DNL, plus a half-mile beyond that. Deer Valley also has two runways, parallels. They also protect to the 60 DNL, plus a quarter-mile to a mile beyond. On the north-south runway and the east-west runway, they do it a little bit different, 65 to 68 DNL because of the older homes in that area. Gateway has three runways, three parallels. They protect beyond the 60 DNL by about a half-mile or so. Their operations are similar to that of Prescott's. Chandler also has two parallels, slightly less number of operations, but they also protect to the 60 DNL. So when you look at the state of Arizona, these are the most representative, similar airports to Prescott in terms of the geometry, the number of runways that the airports have, and similar in nature to the number of operations. So we thought those were good comparable airports for you to look at and consider as you consider the land use update.
So are you saying that there are no, there's no housing inside the 60 DNL?
That's, what we're saying is, as of the time that the airfield overlay district, or whatever the named district is, that they set prohibitions against housing in those areas to that level.
And then some add a cushion of a quarter or a half-mile.
In fact, yeah. For example, at Mesa-Falcon Field, there are, no residential and many other sensitive uses are prohibited up to the 60, but they've added in a half-mile buffer beyond that, which is essentially moving toward the 55, much in the same way we had a 55 that was also constrained by the edges of the impact zones. So this is the way they wrote it, is projects beyond the 60 plus a half-mile squared off for ease of application when they were doing streets, when they were aligning it with streets for their zoning.
Right. So the point is, what you're considering is not unique to airports, and it's not unique to airports in Arizona, as we've described here for the different airports down in the valley.
Thank you.
Question. Tom Riley. When you say the protections go beyond, what kind of protections are we talking about, and how do they compare with some of the land use protections that you're talking about in this AVO?
They're very similar. We have entire reports on each of those, if you would like to see the entire reports. But in summary, the majority of the sensitive uses that we've identified, and actually some additional ones, are in some of their plans, and so it's surprisingly similar. There is a prohibition against residential beyond the 60 DNL, plus the half-mile at both Mesa-Falcon and Phoenix-Mesa-Gateway Airport, and that means no residential in those areas. Now, there are some cases, and I'm going to show you Deer Valley. I'm going to drop this down just a second. Deer Valley was a little complicated, so let me go ahead and relaunch this, if I can. See if I can move this. I've got, underneath here, I've got Deer Valley. Let me tell you what Deer Valley has. Deer Valley, when it put in its overlay district in 2006, it had already residential at each end of the runway. That's why from east and west, that 65 to 68 ended up being the end of their overlay district. Those homes were actually built in the 1980s and the 1990s, so they far precluded even noise contours being generated, let alone their use. On the north and south side, there's protections a mile up from the 60 and a quarter-mile down from the 60, and on the right-hand side, there's like a sort of a multifamily, and so that also was the limiting factor, was the existing residential that was in place at the time it was put in.
So the protections don't extend over existing residential in those?
They deliberately stopped at those areas that were already built, because why would they put protections over them unless they wanted to go in there and obtain those properties? So they stopped at the edge of the existing residential that was built in before 2000.
And we're incorporating existing residential in this AVO, according to the way it's been presented so far?
Yes. In terms of the prohibitions that exist in those areas, they stopped their AVO at the edge of those areas and said that it doesn't go over those areas. In the case of Deer Valley, that does not apply to all the rest.
The land use that is, that the proposed AVO, our proposed AVO, would be covering over in residential areas, would put restrictions on new residential in those areas. However, the existing residential in those areas has no restrictions on it whatsoever.
I'll let George go ahead and handle that. Where are you, George?
Take the easy questions. The language we're proposing, and we've talked about it at the last meeting, is to effectively not apply retroactively. First of all, you don't apply zoning retroactively. It's illegal to apply it retroactively. So we're not applying the zoning restrictions retroactively on existing structures or existing subdivisions. So if there is a subdivision that's already under these requirements, the land use prohibitions, the tables that we'll look at when we call up the document, wouldn't prohibit further development on those properties, as long as they meet every other city code, just like you would if you were at the south end of Prescott. So it's a different circumstance. I think in the circumstance you're asking about, those were almost entirely developed in neighborhoods with very little additional development potential, so they just stopped them as a solid border. What we've done is say, well, we have a lot of land that potentially could develop within those boundaries. Those that are already there, and those subdivisions that are already there, should be protected and allowed to continue to develop. And I can show you that language specifically when we get to that point.
Thank you.
Just as a reminder, per FAA Order 1050-1F, local land use jurisdictions may have noise and land use compatibility standards that differ from the FAA's land use compatibility guidelines with respect to the 65 DB. And in fact, as you can see in all the examples that we've shown you above, and by the way, these are the Arizona rankings. This is the second busiest, we're the third busiest in Arizona, fourth busiest, fifth busiest, sixth. So these were taken as really good examples because of these representative criteria to show that they've done something very similar to what you're considering here today. All set? Do you have any questions of Mr. McDermott before he sits down? Okay. All right. Okay, so the additional information that we have received relates to the airline splay as well. You had seen this diagram to the right showing the splay. This goes back to June and some of the earlier meetings where we showed the width of the splay. The airspace expert that we obtained is an individual from a company referred to called Lean. Just to give you an idea on the airspace credentials on them, they are Lean Technology Corporation, and we work with the Principal Aerospace and Flight Operations Engineer. They've worked with more than 3,000 airports throughout the world on airspace analysis, instrument procedure, design and development, obstruction evaluation, aircraft performance, obstacle mitigation, runway length determination, payload determination, flight operations, and I can go on with their 3,000 different airports that they've worked with throughout the world. So they are some of the top experts on airspace analysis. So what they did is they looked back at the splay that was provided by consultants, a consultant of one of the developers. We pretty much validated the edge of what we refer to here as the center boundary. It's a little bit wider than the one that they had shown, but these are, the source of all this data that was generated by our airspace experts was actually Boeing-Jefferson, Aircraft Performance Group, Automated Systems and Aircraft Performance, Airbus, American Envoy, Delta, United, SkyWest, and also Aeradata also provided information, informed us as to how the displays can be protected. So this is, again, the outer boundary of the airline splay or departure path. This is created because they are required under federal aviation regulations, under FAR Part 25, 121, 135, and 91, under the first principle, one-engine inoperative profiles, to create these profiles so that they can operate safely out of airports when they have an engine out. These particular approaches and this information and everything we've used here is also used by San Francisco International Airport, DFW, San Jose, Miami, Fort Lauderdale, and many, many other airports. And so... And so we are using it here at Prescott. We think it's got a solid reputation as being reliable and reasonably protective. So you can see, this is the outer boundary of the airline splay as it crosses. This is going to the southwest of the airport, so this is where we're talking about right here. And you can see what the airspace expert did is they came up with how tall an obstruction can be in these areas based on current elevation. So if you do grade down, it could be different, but this is with current elevation taken into account. You can see in this area right here, there's some serious concerns with the fact that nothing can be above ground level. Here, you can see that it has to be monitored as we go this direction, because there are some concerns about how tall something can be in these areas. And then in the outer splay, or outer boundary area, it is a little less restrictive, but there are still concerns associated with this area. So we just want to make sure that we continue to inform you on the developments as we make sure that all of the measures that we're using are valid. They're industry standard, they've been used by many other airports, and we see no reason why it wouldn't be appropriate to use them and reference them at Prescott. Do you have any questions about this?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Riley.
I'm just trying to understand the information that's being presented. The dark red would mean that nothing above ground level. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless it's graded down or there's an adjustment in that area.
Okay. And then the lighter color, as you start to get a little bit lighter, before you get into the blues and the greens, this goes from 10 feet to 20 feet to 30 feet above grade, existing grade?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Then I'm understanding it.
And we were trying to do this because we want to help developers and landowners know what the impacts are on the properties. And the fact is that if we cannot protect these areas adequately, if we allow additional obstructions to be constructed in these areas without adjusting the ground level, we have concerns about the ability of the air carrier to continue to viably operate here and support the needs of the community for continued air service growth in the future.
Have the air carriers said that to you?
Yeah, I actually included a letter from SkyWest Airlines in your packet, and it was sent to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So as George went over quickly, this, the current code was adopted in 2002, that A-N-O, and I do apologize, it's a noise overlay, A-N-O. No residential is permitted within the 65 DNL. There is some interior sound level mitigation included, but it's difficult to enforce or measure. Airport impact zones were not included or protected in that document because it actually was before they were created. Navigation easements have been required since 2002. And one of the things, of course, that was mentioned earlier is the current noise overlay does not align with the airport-specific area plan, nor the land use plan, nor the voter-approved general plan. So we, because we see no alignment there, and it also was not in alignment with the plan, the strategic plan of the city council, which was adopted in January of this year, which indicated that we were going to reduce encroachment by making sure that our codes do properly reflect these plans. So as we move forward, we're going to be talking about some options for your consideration that have been discussed in the community, but I'd like to say that before we introduce these options as possibilities for consideration, there are some common features that are not specifically called out. We're calling out the differences in the options in the slides after this. So what are the similarities of the AVO options that you might consider? Well, the first one is the similarity is that nonconforming language has been removed. Remember that existing noise-sensitive uses and final platts continue to operate within underlying zoning provisions, not nonconforming solely by the establishment of this AVO. The second is navigation easements will continue in largely the same form that they have been with some minor adjustments associated with the language relating to protecting the critical airspace areas. In the airport influence area, which was established since 2002, in the case of planned developments, there are existing easements that are in those planned developments, so those existing easements and that language can be used. Under the fair notice disclosure requirement for the renters and buyers for planned developments, they already have some existing fair notice disclosures, and those have been accepted and used, so that's fine. In all of the options you're about to see, there's going to be a reference to the land use table. In each one, where sensitive uses may be altered a little bit with the upcoming proposals, we would simply reflect that in the land use table. For the AVO text, it'll remain unchanged unless there's an exemption or some adjustment that is created as a result of the option that you ultimately select. Also, there is that mention of the airspace protection, so all of the AVO options do support the FAA-based airspace evaluation, as well as the airline one-engine departure path protection. And finally, just a reminder that the contours and the land use limits associated with it do stop at the impact zones and the city limits. So you can see, at no time is there ever a point at which a contour, if adopted, will be adopted if it goes outside of the impact zones or the city limits. That would be, obviously, if there was something in another jurisdiction in the future, that would be settled in that matter, but right now, this stops at the city limits.
Could you repeat that for me, please?
Any contours that are adopted and any land use limits associated with those contours are all contained to the impact zones and the city limits.
So the noise contours that are out there, that go outside of the impact zones, are they controlling those areas outside the impact zones?
We do not have the ability, and like Joe, our attorney, if you want to go ahead and address that?
Yeah, sure. Joseph Young, City Attorney. I think it's just a real basic premise that we can't regulate land outside of the city jurisdiction. So noise contours are what they are, but to the extent that you, as a planning commission, decide to make land use regulations based on those noise contours, you can't do so outside the city limits.
But inside the city limits, though, the noise contours will govern what happens inside those noise contours with land use?
Correct.
Okay.
Depending on what you decide, yes.
Okay. I thought I was hearing something different. Sorry.
So here is the option that was presented to you months ago now. This is the AVO original. We call it the modified 55 option. It's the most protective and also the most restrictive. Most protective in terms of protecting the airport, as well as protecting individual homeowners who may be living in those residence from adverse possible impacts associated with the airport, whether it's safety-related impacts or extensive overflight and noise. It's most restrictive in terms of landowners and developers, in terms of what they can do with their property. So the modified 55 option, which was the original option that you were presented with, actually does align with the 2009 airport land use plan, as well as the 2015 voter-approved general plan. In that particular option, it permitted residential uses in airport impact zones four, five, and six. And just to refresh, the areas down here is, this is zone one, this is zone two, this is zone four. This skirt, we call it the skirt, is zone three. Zone five is kind of a particular unusual one. It's actually what I call, like, and when you're bowling, you know how there's gutters? It's sort of like gutters along the edge. So this is zone five, actually kind of extends all the way along the length of the runway, so it's kind of an unusual one. And then ultimately, zone six is the area that's out here. You see the number six right here? It's the area, and it actually composes the outer boundary for the impact zones. So again, at no time, at any point that a contour, for example, here's a 55 contour peeking out beyond the impact zones, at no point does that have any land use implications beyond the edge of the impact zones. The impact zones prevail. It also allows sensitive uses in airport impact zone six, but again, outside the, what we call the modified 55 DNL contour. That was the contour that was in place at the beginning, and we did not have the information on the 2026 future contour at that point. So this plan was all based on that. In addition, hospitals, hotel, motel, and correctional facilities are permitted in AIZ-6, but outside of the 60 DNL. Just so folks know what we're talking about in terms of sensitive uses, it's large gathering venues, library, daycare, preschool, social club, place of worship, RV parks, and, excuse me, convention center. So what you see on this map is essentially, there's the properties that are in the 55, there's the properties that are in the 60, and there's the properties that are in the 65 DNL contour. They are color-coded. If you see a cream color, it's properties that are specific to the band between 55 and down to 60. The green indicates those within the 60. And the kind of pinkish color or grayish color that's like this area here are the properties that are within the 65, here, here, and here, and some over here. So then, Joe, I'm sorry, did you want to go ahead and discuss the options that they're about to see?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Again, just quickly, we've been asked to provide you options, and so staff will provide three separate options that are considered kind of ideal options or viable options by staff. But that is in no way to restrict your discussions. The whole world of options is available. But as mentioned, staff will present the three that think are the most viable and explain why they are more viable than others. One of those, you'll see, has distinct treatment for land within one of the development agreement areas, which is Deepwell Ranch, and it's a recognition of those pre-existing rights. And we discussed previously that there are pre-existing rights within these boundaries, and we ask you to make a planning decision, not make decisions based on those rights. Ultimately, council will have to make a decision as to the rights. However, as a recommending body to council, you have to recognize that there are rights, and you may want to make the most limited recommendation possible within where some of those rights exist, and that's why that option will be presented. But any option there is available as well, from not wanting to make any exceptions for those areas, to wanting to recommend that they be excluded. All of those are kind of within your purview. So I guess, I just want you to know that you have the option to consider anything, but the three options that we're going to present, or that staff's going to present, are what we see as the viable options.
So the first option, this one is considered least protective for the airport and individual homeowners in terms of overflight, and the most restrictive in terms of limitations on landowners and land developers. In this approach, it would basically be ignoring the future forecast. It would be using the 2021 contours, and it would be doing a combination of impact zones and those contours. Under the area of residential, hospital, and sensitive uses, they would be permitted in airport impact zone six. That's everywhere outside of one through five, but it would be outside the 60 DNL contour. The 60 DNL contour contains all of the items that are in green, as well as the items that are within the 65 below it, which are kind of this putty color. So it would affect those areas in this context. And you can see, by affecting it, it's over them. Now, there are only very few of those outside of Deepwell Ranch that are actually potential residential use. And so we've had discussions, and we showed that at a previous planning and zoning meeting, that there are actually five properties in the 60 DNL. The hospital is one of them, and I know that the hospital is going to be an item of discussion, so if you would like to address the hospital item, just so it's up there?
Sure.
Okay.
I think that what Robin's referring to, we wrote a letter that basically reflected that we've reviewed, staff has reviewed, all of the uses that are permitted under the development agreement with the hospital. And all of those can go forward, although depending on what is ultimately decided by council, there may need to be some adjustments on the property of those uses as to where they sit. But those uses can go forward according to kind of staff's review of the current recommendations to you. So again, ultimately, you haven't made a decision, council hasn't made a decision, but based on all three of the options, you'll see, will allow the hospital to do all their uses, though depending on the option you choose, there may need to be some kind of movement within the parcel of some of the possible uses.
And this is the property up here to which we're referring. It's actually two different parcels that are co-located next to each other, and one of them does have impacts associated with the 60 as it crosses right here. There's a little small portion in this corner where the 60 does cross. Hotel motels and correctional facilities also would be permitted in airport impact zone six, but outside the 65 DNL, and that may be an item that would, that perhaps down here, they would like to consider, so we wanted to make sure that that was addressed. Here's the edge of the 65 DNL, right here, if you want to see where that is. It touches the corner of this area over here, which does allow for mixed use and many different uses in the south skirt of zone three. So that's the first potential option. Before I leave, does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Riley?
Yes, I do have a question. If I understand the zoning that is being proposed in this, if the 60 DNL contour overlays a parcel, then the restrictions that are put in place for the entire parcel, even that portion of the parcel that's outside the 60?
George, would you like to go ahead and address this? The answer is that is yes, but you could also change the boundaries of the parcel and basically align it with the impact zones, but go ahead.
That's something else that we're also looking at. There are two different approaches that zoning codes take to that. Either it affects the whole parcel, or it affects the developed portion of the parcel, which is kind of what Robin just told you. So if someone wants to develop a portion of the parcel, we'll look at that developed area, because many of these parcels are very large and undeveloped.
Yes.
If they're developing a certain portion of that, that's what we'll evaluate, not the whole parcel.
That hasn't been decided yet. You haven't decided that yet. It's not been included in this yet.
No, not the language specifically. We still have the overlay language, which was originally in there, but that's something that we're doing some additional research on.
Okay.
Again, one of the things that we're taking into consideration is that these are large unsubdivided parcels for the most part, and they're going to develop in pieces, a stage at a time. So if a development occurs in a corner that's affected by the 65, it's subject to the 65. If a development occurs in another section that's subject to the 60, then it would be restricted by whatever the restrictions are for the 60.
So you're contemplating, then, that the uses that would happen outside the 60 DNL that are still in the same ownership parcel would be allowed to happen the way they normally would outside the 60?
Again, subject to where they are on a parcel, yes. So if they're outside of a 60 DNL and they're not restricted by something else, yes.
I'll be interested to see that language. Thank you.
Or you can suggest the language, which is just fine with us. Let's say, you know, it could be specific to the use in the area that's submitted, as opposed to the entire parcel, that's, that could work. So before I leave, this option, does anybody have any other questions? I do want to point out that what we've shown on this, on this particular diagram, is that some of what we call the proposed land acquisition parcels. So it's this area that's shaded down here. So this is what went to city council for approval, and they did approve it. There are acquisition, there are cer, I'm sorry, appraisals out for potential acquisition of these parcels. It would include this area right here, a good portion of this area. You can see parts of it are not, but a good portion of this area is out for appraisal. It also includes this area down here that does have the potential for residential, but it also is a target for acquisition. Of course, we've got to see those appraisals. Those are underway as we speak. And on the north side of the airport, there's another area up here for potential acquisition. It's notable that this area and this area, well, it's kind of hard to see it, but that also is included in the package of what the appraisers are appraising for potential future acquisition right here. All right. So the next one, we put them on the same slide because it's option two and then option three, but what option two is moderately protective and restricted, and option three is moderately protected and restriction with a Deepwell Ranch exception. So in this case, the approach is again, a combination of impact zones, but in this case, now we're looking at future 2026 contours, with a note that there is a hospital accommodation that is included in this option, a specific hospital accommodation. In this case, sensitive uses are the same definition of the same group of sensitive uses. Plus, we've added in the hospital, the hotel, and correctional facilities. These all would be permitted in AIZ-6, but outside the future 2026 60 DNL contour. In addition, the Yavapai Hospital North Accommodation, the hospital and medical residence to be accommodated, using instead of the future, it would be using the 2021 contour. So it would be granted, in essence, an exception to have its development agreement and its uses, something that can be supported. Option three is where you do the same items as option two through the entire rest of the AVO. And then there would be an exception in this case. The approach would be an exception for Deepwell Ranch existing annexed areas that are shown on the map. Residential, school, and sensitive uses, there is a contour level exception. They are permitted only in AIZ-6, but outside the future 2026 65 DNL contour. Just so you know, it's like back here. And then up on the top, it goes across the top, right here. Here's the future. Here's the future 65. So it is much smaller. So it is much smaller when it comes to the Depot Ranch area, right in this area. And then in addition, there is some clarification of impact zone three, what we refer to as the south skirt. So in the Depot Ranch master plan, there was an exception for this area that did allow some type of residential. George can speak to the exact details, George, if you wanted to. Did you want to? If they have questions. In this case, mixed use rentals, commercial, hotel motel, even RV park short stay will be allowed in Zone Three, South Skirt, but it must be outside the future 65 DNL, which would poke out right here. Again, this is just an option. There has been some discussion that maybe they would get an exception to the current 60 as opposed to the future 65, when everybody else is moving to the future 60 in all of this. But that is an option that you all can consider and discuss. That would involve the future 60, which is right, the green one that goes all the way around. Let's see if I can get it all the way around and comes down right across here. That's the future 60. Okay. There was a question earlier about airport area jurisdictions. Kirby, I believe you wanted this slide. Did you want to address this? This is just to show you proximity to Prescott Valley and proximity to Chino Valley. And if you have any other questions, I can assist you with those.
I have a few questions. But before I get to them, I think of a comment that George made earlier in our meeting to give the public an idea of what it is the planning commission does. And usually what that means is we get in our trucks and we go out to the job site and we look at the potential and we look at topographic maps. But basically what we do, although you don't need to be, it helps to be an engineer, to take technical presentations like this and boil it down into something we understand. So what we try to do is we deal in facts. In most cases, that is relatively easy. It's not been easy in this particular case, because in addition to facts, we've had a lot of misinformation. And I'm afraid that Washington politics has come to everybody's hometown. And the word I think of that they use a lot in Washington is gaslighting. Now, if you take an abbreviated definition from Webster, "Gaslighting is a psychological manipulation of a person that causes the victim to question the perception of reality and typically leads to confusion, loss of confidence, and self-esteem, and a dependency upon the perpetrator." Now, we've heard examples of gaslighting here in P&amp;Z. We were told that the sound levels at the airport are no different than the sound levels at the YMCA. That's patently untrue. Another claim was that FedEx, that has a truck facility out at the airport, will be flying 20 flights a day out of the airport. That's not true. But I wanted to ask you a few questions of things that have come up recently that I think needs to be addressed. And the reason I believe they need to be addressed is they're not to become urban legends and people tend to believe in them. Lately, we heard a quote that said, "The FAA requires if you impose a DNL level at the airport, that it has to be the same DNL level throughout the city." Could you address that comment?
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to do that. There was a statement made by an individual recently, and so I think we should address that. FAA technical language can actually be quite confusing. And it was evidenced by a statement that was made about a month ago at P&amp;Z, where the presenter implied that the FAA requires that a noise contour adopted at the airport area for land use must be applied to the entire community. To clarify, the FAA firmly opposes community-imposed aircraft operating restrictions unless those restrictions apply to all other noise sources in the community. Communities are not permitted to discriminate solely against aircraft noise and operations. But since this AVO is not seeking to impose aircraft operating restrictions, this does not apply to our community. So what was spoken or what was cited to you applied to that scenario, not to this. Said another way, the FAA says you can't prevent a flight from operating because it might exceed your daily dose of whatever the noise level is, unless you're seeking to impose that same noise restriction on all the rest of the community. So it's more about aircraft operating restrictions than it is about land use controls around an airport that are based on a reasonable measure of noise and overflight limitation. Does anybody have any questions about that? So it doesn't apply to this process?
Second question I have for you, there's been a concern about the Trinity complex, whether they can see that to completion. Could you address that?
So that's more of a land use question. I can address that. Their project lies within an area and has already vested rights to allow them to continue the development of the Trinity School Site to its completion. So there's nothing about their proposal that this would stop continuing.
Now, you've mentioned a couple of times, my third question, you mentioned a couple of times about the hospital. And we've read the article in the Courier from the CEO about the hospital. What's been the issue and what is the potential? And this is all conceptual. They don't really have a plan that we can look at. But what is the possible solution for the hospital?
So the conceptual plan shows, and here we go, I'm sorry. The conceptual plan that I've seen actually shows the hospital sort of centrally located. It shows some medical buildings and other facilities around the outside. Some of it is medical provider, proposed like temporary housing or short-term housing or something like that. All we're saying is that with some minor tweaks, every use that they have can fit on this property. And I know there were some concerns about utilities. Joe, would you like to address the utility item?
I don't know how much detail is really appropriate to get in at this point there. I would just say that addressing utilities in general, the city has an obligation already through existing agreements to provide a regional water main into that hospital parcel and a regional sewer main or wastewater main close within, close to the location of the hospital. It's not to be stubbed out by the city, but we do have that obligation to provide those regional mains already.
Is that?
Thank you.
Robin, I had a question. This is Susan Graham. A number of people have expressed concern about the early, very early morning flights of Embry-Riddle and the very late night flights of Embry-Riddle and have expressed concerns and thoughts in terms of having Embry-Riddle negotiate as well in terms of limiting some of those early morning flights and late night flights. And I know you have mentioned that that is not possible. Could you explain to everyone why that is not possible?
So just to clarify, we are a public use airport and the acceptance of federal funding, we must keep the airport open without access use restrictions that are pre-approved by the FAA. And it's pretty tough to get those access use restrictions approved. And in most cases, they have been denied at communities across the country with two exceptions. Can they voluntarily engage in discussions so that we can work out perhaps even a more proactive voluntary noise abatement program? I think we could work with them on that. And I think they're open to that. So I think it's always a two-way street and I think it's important that we have the communications. We'll be starting quarterly meetings in the spring to have a noise committee that will be able to talk about issues and see whether or not we can find a pathway forward that's mutually acceptable without limiting the operations at this 90-some-year-old airport. And what I also have shared with people at the open house, and they frankly have been really optimistic about it, many of them in these communities on the area, the extension of this runway, a half mile further to the northeast, is going to be a significant benefit. If it doesn't happen, the amount of noise impact is going to exponentially increase over the next several years. And so we really need to get this cooperative voluntary program, also with some real strong infrastructure program. And that's what I'm doing, is I'm looking at a part infrastructure improvement approach and part community cooperation and collaboration approach.
Thank you.
Other questions? Stan, did you have any questions?
I do not.
Thank you. Anything else, Robin, right now?
No, but I'm available if you'd like me later on to follow up and answer any questions.
We're about an hour and a half into this here. Before we go to the public comment section, why don't we go ahead and say, take a 10-minute break on this? Everybody back in place there? Before we start with the public hearing, George, we're going to be getting a copy of these options sent to us, right?
Correct.
And I don't believe we got a copy of the letter from the airlines. Did anybody get that in their packet?
No.
Should have come out in the packet you got yesterday or Friday?
I agree, it should have.
Oh, a month ago.
It should have.
Yeah.
Oh, it was in a previous meeting then. That's the confusion.
So it was a month ago.
We'll have to look at documentation for other meetings. We can do that after, but I think it was in a previous meeting packet.
Okay.
Yeah, that documentation is getting rather voluminous.
It is. I push everything I get, you know, in waves to you guys before the meetings.
Sure you do.
resend that to us, please, on that.
Yeah, if you would, I would appreciate that.
Sure. Anything else, Tom?
Well, one of the things with the copy of the information on the three proposals that you have, Robin showed us a map that indicated the property, in particular, the hospital property with the crossbars on it and the different land uses and how they're affected by the different overlays and what have you. I'd like to get a nice copy of that, too.
A nice copy is defined as a full page.
I have a better idea.
Something legible. We can send you the PowerPoint presentations, both the planning one and the airport one that would have all of that information in it. Is electronic copy acceptable to you? Or do you want me to get the saw out and start on the trees?
I want to have a paper copy, please.
Okay.
Well, if he gets one, I want one, too.
Okay.
All right, there goes the forest. Yes, we'll get that information to you as soon as we can get it.
Okay, thank you then. We're going to open this up for public comment and we're going to change some of the ground rules we did. What I like to have is members of the public who have not presented their ideas or their thoughts to us, you will come first on that. Then we will go to the parties who've already presented things. And what we're looking for is, as we've talked about here, we've had a lot of hearings on this and we've received a lot of information. What we're looking for is new information, new thoughts on this. We would prefer that things that have been presented to us before not be re-presented, but give us more information that we don't have or you think we need on that. And if possible, we'd like to have maybe one representative from corporate entities to speak, you know? This is our preference. I'm not going to make a comment during it if it doesn't work out that way, but this is our preference on that, okay? So members of the public who have not had an opportunity to speak before us before, please identify yourself and we'll call you up to the microphone. Sir? Or should I say Reverend Father? I'm not sure, but sir I knew would work.
Phil works. I am the Reverend Philip Shaw. I'm the rector of St. Luke's Episcopal Church, which for any of you who have ever driven to the airport, you've driven right past us. We have been a part of the Prescott community for 132 years. For 110 of those years, we were downtown, most recently very close to here at the corner of Marina and Union. We moved to our current site in the year 2000. In the year 2000, when we built our current facility, we submitted a site plan that showed expansion of our facility that we would anticipate in the next few years. That is all approved. Currently, looking at these maps, we show up in Zone Three. Churches are not allowed in Zone Three. I understand, I've heard from George, that we're there, we're not going to be forced to move, but there are some other wrinkles. The biggest of those wrinkles is that right now, literally in the next four weeks, we will be coming to the city of Prescott for a building permit to do roof repairs because of storm damage and an electrical permit to do HVAC repairs due to the same storm damage. Under the proposed, we would be required to have signed a hold harmless agreement. You know what insurance companies think of hold harmless agreements? We would be a church with no insurance. That is not a viable position. We are not the only house of worship in this overlay district. There are two others that are very large and right on the edge of it. There is one other that has previously been mentioned that is on hold because of questions about how this is going to end up. We need to look at this. You are putting the people who own this property and have developed it in good faith over a long period of time in significant financial jeopardy. I dare say, rendering a multimillion-dollar, 17-acre property uninsurable comes really close to being a taking, in the legal sense of that word. I would invite you, please, to study this in great detail. Before you recommend anything to council, be aware how it is going to impact long-term members of this community who have done everything that we could to be good neighbors to the airport and everybody else, and don't inflict grave damage. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Normally, we don't respond directly to a public comment on it, but do we want to make any comment concerning this particular situation?
Hello, Kirby Snidman, Community Development Director. I think at this point, it's better to take all of the public comment, then we can respond at the end. But I will say to this, that the draft of the AVO is still subject to change based on what we hear today and also some things we're working on as staff that we've heard as well from the public. So it is still a work in progress and we're definitely listening today from the feedback we hear from you and the public.
Okay. Other members of the public?
Good morning. My name's Karen Brown. And I have...
Karen, could you give us your address?
Oh, I live in the Saddlewood Communities on Barn Isle Avenue. Currently with the proposed AVO, that would be, oh, thank you, the proposed AVO, I'm in Zone Six. Now, I have two major concerns. I heard a rumor that, I've heard two rumors. The first one is that our neighborhood is going to be grandfathered to the old overlay. Is that true? That there will be no difference if you live in Zone Six, that it won't affect, you know, what's the word I'm looking for, disclosures when you, I mean, disclosures, yeah, should be made and that was addressed already much earlier in the purchasing of a property. But what I understand from the last meeting was that it would actually become a misdemeanor to not disclose that you're in an airport neighborhood? I don't understand that. I mean, I just don't, I'm really worried about, see, I'm 68. I put 90% of my cash into the purchase of this home. And I don't want that... I put 90% of my cash into the purchase of this home, and I don't want that home to lose value because it's in this overlay. The other rumor I heard was that... And this is a huge concern. So let me just say, like, on Monday, I had a guest over my house. We were standing outside talking, and every two or three minutes, there's an overflight at less than 200 feet, mostly Cessnas. My friend whips out her phone and says, "Oh, I've got an app," and we look and see that they're all flights from Embry-Riddle University. And I don't understand for the life of me, when there is so much prairie land surrounding the Saddlewood neighborhood, why they have to fly directly over our houses? Because the formation of the runways are an X, and we're in the angle of that X. So why do they need to have students flying directly over our homes at low altitude when it would be so simple to just change their flight path? So, these are my two concerns, and I hope you take this into consideration. You know, when you make your decision, I mean, from what I see, Option 3 would be the most favorable for people who are already living and who already have plans to build in our neighborhood. And I'd like to see less restriction on the hospital area because we need a hospital in the north of Prescott. You know, people in Chino Valley and, you know, points north, if they have an emergency situation, it takes them a long time to get to healthcare. And so anyways, thank you for hearing me out. And, oh, one more comment, you know? On that open house at the airport, they claim that, you know, this is going to provide additional jobs, this is going to provide additional flights out of Prescott. Well, when I first moved to Prescott, there were five different cities being served from the airport. And as far as I can see, unless it's economically feasible for an aircraft to come in here and provide flights out, they're not coming. That's why there's only two flights to different cities now. Because for the airlines, it's not profitable. So I don't see how, just making the runway longer, I can see how that would be more safety for current flights, but I don't see how that's going to bring in more flights, unless, you know, there's significant growth in Prescott. So, thank you for hearing me. Oh, I also, if... Let me see, his name is, Mr. Moore? If Mr. Moore is listening, I want to thank you for being the only one that responded to the email that I sent out to all of you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Other members of the public that have not spoken here before? Okay. Kaylee?
Okay, I have two items that I'm going to read, and then we have representatives who would like to speak, and then maybe we go to Zoom? That sounds good. Okay. So I just want to note, I did receive a petition from residents in the proposed area expressing their opposition. There are 45 that signed it. I'll just go ahead and attach this to our city record as well as send you all a copy, okay? It's not a comment, it's rather just a petition. I did get a comment from a resident via email last night. They could not attend today, so I'm going to read it. "To the Prescott Planning and Zoning Commission, I am unable to attend your hearing tomorrow and writing this evening to provide my perspective regarding the Airport Protection Code amendments. I ask that, if possible, please read my short letter into the record. My comments are not an attempt to diminish the validity of the stakeholder views, as the stakeholders all have very legitimate reasons to have a dog in the fight with City Hall. I do not live within the proposed overlay area. However, as a long-term resident, taxpayer of the city of Prescott, and frequent user of the airport, I too have valid concerns. My primary concern is that the city will not adopt the zoning code changes as recommended by airport and planning departments. And my second primary concern, if you will, is the city won't require all development within the overlay to comply with the revised code. Stated differently, I'm concerned that the situation the city is currently in will be repeated in the future. That in the future, whoever's running the circus in City Hall will negate the importance of adhering to the adopted airport protection codes. It has been an eye-opening experience watching your meetings to learn the extent to which the city caved in to the developer in the 2017 Development Agreement negotiations. Now is the time to correct those mistakes. Please don't be swayed by intimidation tactics being used by some stakeholders, including such heinous actions as taking a property, violation of U.S. Constitution, and the private property rights argument. Instead, take guidance from the Prescott General Plan, Section 4.4, Balancing Community Values, Paragraph 3, which states, 'Business development, neighborhood, and environmental protection efforts will at times conflict. The community must conscientiously make choices and trade-offs when values conflict. In making these community choices and trade-offs, community-wide interests and benefits will be the primary criteria for resolving the conflict. When considering neighborhood conflicts not of a community-wide impact, the concerns of the neighborhood will be the primary consideration. When it comes to the protection of the city's economic engine, the community values are clear. Please send an affirmative recommendation to the city council that protection of airports is essential. To act otherwise is irrational. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Maxine Snyder, Prescott, Arizona.'" Okay, so I'm going to call up representatives, though I'm going to note that one of these is not a representative. They are just a resident, but they have spoken before. So Ms. Garthwait, if you'd like to speak.
Yeah, I got it. Let me get myself here. Hello, everyone. Good morning. Good morning to this commission. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to you again.
We need to have you speak with your name and address, please.
It's Sindra Garthwait in Warbler in Saddlewood. Thank you. Okay, I had to revise my original speech this morning because we have to rebuttal our esteemed colleagues here at the airport. First and foremost, we are not a metropolitan area. Do not compare us to Phoenix, or Denver, or LA, or San Francisco, or any other big metropolitan area, okay? We are 45,000 people. This is a small town. Remember that. We do not need to be compared to all of these airports when you are trying to sell this product. This is Ms. Sabata's dream. This is her baby. This is her thing. She has 20 years' experience as an employee for Embry-Riddle. Let me remind everyone at home and here, Embry-Riddle is a for-profit, private school. I'll say it again. They are not part of this city. They are for-profit. They are a separate school here. They can and should and are and do have their own airports at different places, i.e. Daytona Beach. Just getting that out there. Look it up. It is... They have other sites also. So when we're deciding this, it isn't for Embry-Riddle, it isn't for the city, it isn't for the people of this city. It is for Robin Sabata and her gang. Now, I know there's a lot of... She has a lot of friends, and they are, in fact, behind this. Because she is telling you that you need this for our protection. No, we do not need this for our protection. I have the name of the FAA, Tim Morrison. He is the regional FAA engineer for the FAA for our airport. He was called. He said, "No, you don't need this. No, this isn't required. No, why are you asking me this?" And the answer is, quite honestly, I don't know. Because she wants it. She wants to control the airspace around that airport to an extent that she controls the ground beneath it. Let me say that again. I'm a little familiar with the FAA. I had 20 years' experience in aviation. Doesn't mean anything right now, I'm an old lady, but I will say to you this. This is not needed, it is not necessary, and it is not required by the FAA to have this AVO changed. We already have an AVO. We already have protection for our airport. It is appropriate to the size of the city and appropriate to the size of the airport. Please remember this. You'll never hear it from them. You will not hear that. So I have to change my whole really cool speech to rebuttal everything that this one says. You've got to read both sides. You've got to understand that this is not necessary. She keeps putting that in there for your safety, for your safety. We're going to keep you all safe. No, you're not. We already are safe. We already have a great airport. And I admire her as a manager of this airport. She is, and I will, for everyone in the city here, remember that she is an employee of this city. For her to be bringing this to the council, to this commission, is a little bit of a conflict of interest, I feel, because it is her dream. It is her want. It is not a need. I had so much other things I needed to say here. This AVO, if you do it, it still has restrictions on all of the property, the landowners, Deepwell Ranch, and all of the people who are involved in the north part of Prescott. We have a lot of growth coming there, and it isn't just homes. This is a hospital, much, much needed. I had the opportunity of being in a hospital. I do not want to go back to our little hospital again. It was crowded, it was dirty, it was overcrowded, it was crazy. We need a new hospital. We also need more of our health facilities. That is an imperative to the growth and the health of our city. By the way, our city has 45,000 people. Guess how many are over the age of 60, or even the age of 50? It's a lot, okay? Therefore, when you limit the growth of these homes that are supposed to be able to be built by the Deepwell Ranch, the 2017 Development Land Agreement, okay? That has a lot of homes, new homes, to be built. These homes are basically supposed to be somewhat entry-level cost homes. You're going to get young families with children, you're going to get young people ready to start their lives. They want to live here. They chose to live here in Prescott because of all the beauty around us. Do not muddy the waters and the skies with more plethora of planes and more restrictions over our airport area, which limits our growth. That is where, the only place we have to grow, is North Prescott. There is no other place. I've already said that. When you do these restrictions, if you did do this, first of all, I'd like to remind everybody here, it is illegal. You cannot change the 2017 Land Development Agreement. I've looked at it, you cannot change it without permission, and you're not getting that permission. Please understand, if you do that, you are doing something illegal. If you even today vote for this in any way, in any way, shape, or form, because you're changing the land development agreement. And when you do that, it is illegal. I must remind everyone of that. You're impacting all of these lands, you're impacting schools, you're impacting churches, homes, and the hospital. I'm going to keep it short because I would like other people to be able to speak today, too. But please remember, not everything you're hearing from Sabata and even Worley, which, by the way, he is also an employee of the city, and I wonder why he, in fact, is pushing this so hard? I think maybe there's a lot of money behind here. I will remind everyone, $100 million in FAA funding. That's possible if she got a big regional airport going on here. And if you want that, you'll have nothing but an airport in a little, tiny, little one-street town because you will not be able to build around it. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so we'll start calling up representatives. We have Jenna James with Deepwell Ranch. Okay, you're giving it to Stephen. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Stephen Polk on behalf of James Deepwell Ranch.
We will allow a lateral transfer, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I probably need a little bit of help again.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, my name is Stephen Polk, attorney for James Deepwell Ranch. A couple preliminary comments I have. The first one is, just please take note of the community response that you've heard here today and in the previous public hearings. The vast majority of folks here today are against the AVO. It's not needed, it's an overreach, and it will harm them. Now, Commissioner Hutchison and Commissioner Riley, you guys have previously asked about the proposed navigation easement and the proposed fair notice disclosure. Have you, as a commission, actually seen drafts of those documents? I have not. I've looked at all the board packets. It's not in any board packets. I've requested those documents. It's not clear to me if they've actually been prepared. So I'm asking, have you guys seen drafts of those documents? Same with, there was a previous request by Commissioner Graham for copies of the James Deepwell Ranch master plan and the development agreement. We provided those to the city. You know, I would hope that it's been provided to you, and you've had an opportunity to review those. Today, for the first time, we've seen the future forecasted DNL noise contour lines. And now, if you recall from my previous presentation, I reviewed FAA documentation with you, strongly suggesting that the only debate here should be between the current 65 DNL, which is what the FAA has declared is the threshold of significance for residential, and that residential is appropriate below 65. The only debate should be between the current 65 and the future 65 DNL. Would be happy to show you those documents again, but I went over them last time. Now, there was a comment earlier today from the planning director that you don't apply zoning retroactively, and in fact, I quote, "It's illegal." And in fact, I quote, "It's illegal." It's exactly what we're telling you. That's what we have here. We also heard a comment that Trinity, that the Trinity School has vested development rights. And so we're going to exempt Trinity from the AVO. Great, I think that's entirely appropriate. I think there are other vested development rights stakeholders that also need to be exempted. And that any discussion of an AVO needs to start with exempting those vested development rights. And that's, of course, the James Deepwell Ranch master plan in its entirety and the hospital North Campus parcel. Those have vested rights with their development agreements. If we can exempt Trinity, we should be exempting Deepwell Ranch and the hospital as well. And you, as a commission, you know, you have the options. You were presented three options here today. You're not limited only to those options. You can make your own recommendation. You can make your recommendation with conditions. So as I continue to present, think about that. You can, you can make a recommendation to approve the AVO only upon full exemption of the master plan of Deepwell and of the hospital. And that's what you need to do. Or you should be voting no on any AVO today. All right, we saw, for the first time, and it was not included in the board packets, but the presentation from the airport director talked about other airports in Arizona and what they are doing. So while I've been listening, I pulled up some of these other airports to show you folks exactly what we're looking at. This one, this is Phoenix, this Falcon Field Airport. Now, you can see the noise contours for Falcon Field. It's very tight to the airport. Here's the airport strip right here. 65 DNL, then the 60 DNL. Very small to the airport. And in fact, if you look over here, those noise contours are based off of more than a half million enplanements each day, or annually. And remember what we're projecting, those projections we saw earlier today for the city of Prescott Airport are approximately 300,000 or so. So these are much smaller noise contours than what we're looking at for Prescott Airport. Here's that same noise contour map. Here, they have it drawn differently in a way that might be helpful. You can see the three runways for Falcon Field. 65 DNL is dark. The 60 DNL is this dotted line. But the 65 DNL is contained almost entirely within the airport and the two strips. 65 is small. Here's what this looks like on Google Maps. Here's Falcon Field Airport. Look at all the residential around it. Right next to, right next to the airport, there's residential. Directly south of the airport, that's all residential.
I have a question. That section between McPhillips Road and South that says Bush Elementary, what's, what's contained within that area?
Great question, Commissioner. It looks like that's an elementary school and potentially open fields. You know, we're looking at the same satellite map here. We could try... If you're asking about schools, schools near.
So it looks like schools and other office buildings. Is that about, is that about right?
I think that's correct, in fact, yes. So now we pulled it up on the search. Bush Elementary School is right by Falcon Field. Here's a preschool right by Falcon Field. Pulled some other items. That's Falcon Field.
Okay.
Here are the noise contours for Mesa Gateway Airport. You can see the airport itself. You can see the 60 and the 65. Quite small and contained generally within the airport itself. Here's what the satellite map looks like for Mesa Gateway. You can see, there's the airport. Here's, directly next to it is ASU. So when we're talking about prohibiting schools and residential by airports, that's not what other airports in Arizona are doing. ASU is directly next to that. Here's residential just south of the airport. Just east of Phoenix Mesa, this is all Eastmark, right here. Chandler. And these airports I pulled up, these are the ones that you were shown as regulating to the 60 DNL. And that's why I'm showing you, in reality, it's different. It's qualitatively and quantitatively different than the 60 DNL being proposed by city staff. Here's the Chandler Municipal Airport. Here's their 60 DNL noise contour. Very close to the airport. And here's what it looks like on satellite view. Just south of the airport, all residential. Look at all that residential. There we go. Does that work? So I'll show you the funding, but to continue on the comparison of the noise contours... Don't worry, I'll be fast on those slides. Here's... Here's the 2018 noise contours for Prescott Airport, over on the right here. 65 is this one in red. Very, very tight to the airport, here, you can see it. 65 is the red one. That's 2000, that's the 2018 noise contours approved and used by the city of Prescott. Here's the new proposed contours for 2022 that we've been looking at, that the city has been proposing. 65 DNL, much farther out from the airport. Now, why is that? It's a change in the methodology used to measure noise contours. In 2018, that methodology, as I understand it, is using the FAA-approved modeling for noise contours. And that's what the vast majority of airports use in the United States. So when we're talking about land use regulations for Phoenix Mesa Gateway, Deer Valley, Chandler, those ones that regulate the 60 DNL, I showed you the small noise contours. It's because they all use the FAA-approved modeling program for noise contours. And that's what we have today on our 2018.
I love these technical graphs. We have a 55 and we have a 60 DNL. But I think I heard you say that the 65 DNL on the new, on the one on the left is bigger than the 65 DNL on that, as the one on the right. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
I don't see that. Help me out.
And that's... The 65 on the right is the dark red, it's very tight.
The red line.
The red line. That's within the airport boundary itself. You can see, it hardly extends beyond the ends of the runway. The 65 on the left is the dark gray. It's right here. This, all the way past Highway 89. That's the 65 on the new proposed contours. And the difference is the new contours are used, are created using actual data. So it's a difference in the methodology on how you're calculating noise contours. And again, the vast majority of airports, as I understand it, use the FAA-approved modeling that we had in 2018, our current contours. And so when we're talking about regulating to the 60 or the 65 DNL, it's not apples to apples when we're comparing those Chandler, Mesa Gateway airports. Those ones are using actual data, and that's the much smaller contours I just showed you on previous slides. The actual data is much larger and resulting in much more overregulation and prohibiting residential much farther from the airport.
This is Susan Graham. Do you have any information showing the nautical miles that the proposed 65 DNL extends out from the airport?
Yeah, can we look at it on this? Let's see. Commissioner Graham, let's see. So we have, here's the key, that's one mile is that far. And so one mile, you know, measuring from here to the southern boundary of the hospital, where the 60... Your question is about 65?
Correct.
No, I'm... That appears to be a half mile to me, based on this key here.
And some of the other airports, there's 60 and 65 DNL. How far did that extend out in terms of nautical miles?
Let's see if these keys show us. 6,000 feet is that key? One and a half miles all the way out here. That's, but that's far beyond the 65 DNL. You know, we're looking, 65 is the second line here. So trying to measure from there... So that looks like a quarter mile. Let's take a look at the next one. All right, here's a key. That, you know, that's one mile there. So from the, you know, from the boundaries to the 60, I don't know, a half mile for the 60 DNL off the edge of the Phoenix Mesa Gateway. Oh, one inch? All right, that one's not helpful to us. Oh, here it is. 6,000 feet is that whole thing? Oh, here's a thousand feet to there. So Chandler Municipal, you know, I don't know. Is that, is that 1,000 feet to the edge of, of the 60 DNL for Chandler Municipal? Do we have one more? Yeah, that is it. Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Other questions on the, on the distances? There might be more in here.
Could you make that information available to us?
Be happy to do so, Commissioner.
Thank you. You can get it to Kaylee at the city, and she'll distribute it. She distributes everything.
All right, so switching gears slightly, I got some FAA funding numbers because I think that's the other thing that might be on folks' minds is, do we really have to do this sort of regulation for FAA funding? And my law clerk pulled this information off of the FAA AIP grant funding lookup tool, I believe. It's not, it's just not entirely clear this is all the FAA funding that's granted to airports, but at least it's consistent. These numbers are at least consistent among each other. And so, for example, this shows since 2018, Prescott received $38 million. And I've heard from the airport director, we've actually received $50 million from 2018. So maybe it's not all in one place on the FAA website. But as far as the best data we could get, since 2018, Prescott's received 38 million. Scottsdale has received $19 million. Daytona Beach International, which is where Embry-Riddle Daytona flies out of, has received $61 million. Tucson has received $110 million. Flagstaff, $25 million. Deer Valley, $17 million. And Henderson, $7 million. And then if you look back since 2005, which is how far back the data would go, $47 million for Prescott, $36 million for Scottsdale, $137 million for Daytona, and so forth. $211 million Tucson, $58 million Flagstaff, $68 million Deer Valley, $18 million Henderson. Here's, here's what they look like in bar graphs. Since 2018, here's Prescott down here. Since 2005, here's Prescott down here. So these are other airports. And I'll show you the land use regulations for those airports down below.
What conclusion are you drawing from that graph?
The conclusion that I draw, and I think you should draw, is that FAA grant funding is not contingent upon passing this proposed AVO today. We've already received $38 million on this tool since 2018. I believe we can continue to receive FAA grant funding. It's a, I've reviewed the formula. It's complicated on how to earn grant funding, but it involves a whole lot of factors. And land use and noise compatibility planning is a very, very tiny piece of that. Here's an overview of Scottsdale. You can see all of the housing right around. We all know Scottsdale's surrounded by residential. Churches, there's a church that's actually on top of the runway. Here's, these are all churches circled on the right around Scottsdale Airport. Here's hospitals by Scottsdale Airport. We got this one right off the end of the runway. Schools, there's one school right here. Here's Deer Valley that's received $68 million since 2018. Deer Valley's got all this residential just south of the airport. Here's two churches on top of the airport. North Church Phoenix. Eh, hospital's not that close. Here's a school right by the airport. Another school. Likewise, here's the overview of Tucson. You can see all the residential just to the northwest here. Here's the Daytona Beach Airport. And if you can see... It's the show, here's Embry-Riddle, Aeronautical University. Here's, here's the runway for Daytona Beach Airport. There's Embry-Riddle. Here are all the schools around Daytona Beach International Airport. Hospitals. Eh, I think that's actually Melbourne. Oh yeah, Melbourne Orlando Airport here, also in Florida. Eh, this is also Melbourne Airport, I believe. Hospitals, all right. You, I think, I think you get the picture. Moving on. Here are some more noise contour comparisons. Here's the Scottsdale noise contours. 60, here's 55 goes out to there. Very, very tight to the airport, very narrow. The sheer width of the noise contours using the proposed actual data, just, just, you know, it's by a factor of five that, you know, when you... it's by a factor of five that, you know, when you add the additional width on the noise contours using actual data.
Does Scottsdale have a cross runway?
I believe you're correct on that, Commissioner. Here's Sky Harbor, Deer Valley, real tight contours.
Do we know if any of the ones that we're talking about, that they brought up on the screen there, do they have aviation training at this airport of the size that we do?
Mr. Chairman, you know, to my knowledge, they don't have an Embry-Riddle-type airport using the multiple takeoffs, touchdowns, and takeoffs.
Except for Daytona.
Except for Daytona. Here's Tucson with the crosswind runway. It doesn't bloat the whole noise contours the way the new proposed methodology uses. All right, final comparisons. For those airports I was showing you, Flagstaff in the 55, that should actually say in the, oh, do we do 62? In the 55 to 65 DNL, Flagstaff allows, all they require is the interior noise level reduction. Henderson allows, also requiring noise level reduction. Tucson allows it, Scottsdale allows it. Scottsdale requires navigation easement and noise attenuation as well. But they all allow residential up to 65. In 65 up to 70, in fact, all the way up to 70 DNL, Flagstaff allows it with noise level reductions. Henderson allows it, Tucson allows it. Scottsdale, of these four airports we're comparing, that's the only one that prohibits residential once you get above 65. Likewise, the aircraft impact zones. For Zones 3, 4, 5, and 6, Flagstaff allows residential and noise-sensitive uses. They only have height regulations that apply. Henderson allows residential noise-sensitive uses based on those aircraft impact zones. Tucson allows it. Tucson allows single-family and multifamily dwellings if it was permitted by the zoning as of May 16, 1990. So that's grandfathering in all of the zoning through 1990. Scottsdale allows residential in Zones 3, 4, 5, and 6 with that navigation easement and noise attenuation standards. And that's, again, the FAA imposes no land use requirements outside of Zones 1 and 2. So artificially creating prohibitions on residential in Zones 3, 4, 5, and 6, that's above and beyond what the FAA requires. And I'm showing you that here in this comparison. Flagstaff, Henderson, Tucson, Scottsdale, they allow residential in Zones 3, 4, 5, and I'll close with this. There is no convincing evidence that this AVO is necessary. Now, you know in your minds and your hearts that this is wrong. What is being proposed against all the homeowners, and all the homeowners and landowners in Deepwell Ranch, is not moral, it's not ethical, and it's not legal. And let me tell you what I mean. U.S. Planning and Zoning Commission normally consider applications for zoning changes. But here, the city is guaranteed in its contracts that it will not change the zoning. So what you're doing is no longer considering a zoning change. You're being asked to participate in condemnation. That's not what you do as Planning and Zoning Commission. So I would ask that you vote no on the AVO. But if you feel obligated that you have to vote for some sort of AVO, do it with conditions. Do it only on the condition that you exempt all of Deepwell Ranch and all of the hospital parcel, because those have development agreements, those have guaranteed rights. Exempt them from the AVO. If the city wants to change the rules of the game with those, they can do it. It's through condemnation or mutual agreement. So vote no or vote yes only on the condition that you exempt all of Deepwell Ranch master plan, all of the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kaylee?
Okay, Jenna James.
I've got a comment, if I may.
Oh, yes. Go ahead, Stan.
Yeah, just a question. Stephen, I know you sat down here, but the question is, so previous to our last public hearing, we had, you had a meeting with the city. Has there been another meeting? And are there any future meetings set?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Goligoski. Yeah, I'd love to give an update on that. We are engaged in discussions with the city. And I truly believe we'll work it out in a way that provides appropriate planning and needs for the airport and appropriately protects the rights of the Deepwell Ranch. So we've continued to have meetings with them. They, you know, I, if you recall previously, the city first alerted us that they wanted to do something back in March. They said they would order some appraisals. And every month, they'd say, oh, it's going to be another 90 days, 180 days. And at that last meeting, we had just found out that they had not actually ordered the appraisals. So finally, they have ordered those. The appraisers are coming out to meet with us next week. But we can't, it's hard to talk about any sort of solution until we have some numbers from the appraisers. That doesn't happen until next week that they come out to meet with us. But certainly, we're engaged in those discussions. And again, I think that's the appropriate way to resolve land use planning issues with Deepwell Ranch. It is not through enacting an AVO on us, is to continue to have these discussions. And I'm optimistic we'll reach a good solution.
Great, thank you.
Good morning. Jenna James, 1755 Commonwealth Street. I'm a representative from Deepwell Ranch and also the vice president of the Harold James Family Trust. As you know, as you've heard from Stephen, you've heard from us many times, Deepwell Ranch is opposed to the proposed AVO. They can explain the legal reasons. Instead, I will remind you that James Deepwell Ranch has an existing master plan and development agreement. And in that agreement, it states that the city will not even consider a zoning change in the master planned property without our consent. In case anyone is unclear on this issue, the city does not have our consent to consider rezoning property that already has vested rights. Not only is the AVO expressly in contradiction with existing rights, it proposes to destroy the vision of the James family and the Deepwell Ranch master plan. We have been in conversation with many groups to provide amenities to all members of our community based on the existing plan. The proposed AVO will prevent every single one of the amenities that we are working towards in North Prescott. That means a concert hall and performance venue. That means space for the Arizona Philharmonic, the Margaux Fontaine Academy of Ballet. And while the city claims that the AVO will not impact a future North Campus for Dignity Health, YRMC, it's not true. And the hospital would not agree with that assertion. It will prevent a future U of A County Extension Office and a future high school. If the city continues its attempt to systematically destroy the existing entitlements we have under the master plan, it will leave land that we've reserved for future fire and police stations inaccessible. All of the uses that I've listed above are consistent with current FAA requirements and all of the requirements that were in place at the time of the master plan in 2017. In fact, at the request of the Airport Users Committee, the master plan voluntarily went above and beyond that which is required by the FAA. And in Exhibit 5.2 of the master plan, committed that no schools or residential areas would be permitted in Impact Zones 2 and 3. And I personally take particular issue with three of the supposed benefits of the AVO. First, the airport director has spoken multiple times, even today, about the 20 seats that the air carrier currently cannot fill during the summer months, and has insinuated to this body and to the public that the AVO is necessary in order to allow the air carrier to recoup those seats in the future and to protect the one-engine inoperable play. As a reminder, the OEI is an air carrier requirement. It's not a requirement to the airport or to the airport sponsor, being the city of Prescott. It has been stated that those seats cannot be sold due to temperature, elevation, and the existing topography at the end of the runway. You saw today a map showing that topography to you. The AVO would prevent any buildings from being built there in perpetuity. There are currently no buildings in the OEI's play. So unless the AVO proposes to change the other variables, temperature, elevation, or topography, the AVO will do nothing to allow the air carrier to sell those additional seats. So that statement is at best misleading and at worst categorically false. Secondly, the public has been told that the AVO is necessary to protect future commercial air service at the airport. It has been suggested that using the 55 DNL as a threshold of significance is necessary in order to protect that service. I would like to remind everyone that at our last public hearing on September 8, as well as today, we heard from the attorney representing the hospital, we also heard from Stephen, that a similar small non-hub airport is Flagstaff, and that they use the 60 DNL as their threshold of significance. What has been left out of the conversation is that using a lower threshold of significance did nothing to protect Flagstaff from losing its commercial air service. In a Signals AZ article dated July 12 of this year, it was announced by United Airlines that they were pulling their air service from Pullman Airport at the end of October 2022. That's despite flights being 90% full on average and more than 105 passengers annually, 105,000 passengers annually. That's significantly more than the 180,000 total passengers that Prescott Airport has had over the last four years, an average of only 45,000. We cannot draw a corollary that stricter noise contours result in retention of commercial air service. Lastly, we've repeatedly heard from the airport director, the airport advisory committee, and the airport users committee that the AVO is necessary to protect the airport from citizen activism. I don't know about you, but preventing citizen activism sure sounds to me like preventing the citizens of the city of Prescott from exercising their First Amendment right to free speech as it relates to the airport. I can't imagine there is a single member of this commission or anyone sitting in the audience who would actually be in favor of limiting its citizens' right to free speech in exchange for grant funds from the FAA. But that is the nuance of the proposal that you have been given. I would also like to mention that there's been much discussion about the fair notice disclosure and a new stronger navigation easement, but the language for those have not been provided to you nor to the public to see and discuss. How can the city propose to pass a zoning change that requires those documents but not allow anyone to see them? It is kind of the airport director to come up with 11th-hour concessions that she presented today, the three options that she has presented to you. However, even option 3, with some exemptions for Deepwell Ranch, is not enough. It still takes away development rights under the existing master plan. Nothing short of full exemption for the entire Deepwell Ranch master plan is acceptable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Rob Petrich? Peckrich? Sorry. I'm sorry.
I'd like to inquire first if we have Barbara Lickman on Zoom waiting. If so, she's been waiting a long time, and I would like her to go next. She's the FAA expert retained by Chamberlain Construction. So if she's patiently waiting on Zoom, it'd be nice if we could take her.
Okay, she was next, but we'll let her go now.
And I'll go after her.
Okay. Tammy, do you have a?
Hi, Barbara, you can unmute yourself. Barbara, you can unmute. Oh, there you go.
I think I just did.
Go ahead.
Good morning, members of the commission, Mr. Chairman. At the outset, the chairman said, looking for new thoughts. That's not hard to do, considering we just received a completely new proposal with different noise contours, different determinations. I think it's very important that the commission postpone any final determination, voice of an option, until we, the public, have an opportunity to thoroughly vet these new proposals. We applaud the airport for making an effort to do that based on the recommendations and the analysis provided by their consultant, who is a very well-known consultant. But the public hasn't had the opportunity to look at these. So the comments I'm making now are anticipation and partially based on the prior determinations. But to the extent that any of the new proposals involve the imposition of a lower noise contour for residential development than the 65 DNL contour, the following comments are still relevant. So I would like to introduce permission to these concepts, if they have not already been introduced. And here they are. Most importantly, the federal government has exclusive jurisdiction over the airspace of the United States. The Congress has granted that in the FAA Act 49 USC 40103, Section A. This includes, notably, aircraft noise. As the FAA has stated in its Order 5190.6B, Section 13.3, 49 USC 44715 constitutes the basic authority for federal regulation of aircraft noise. This is because, quote, "the federal government has preempted the areas of regulation of aircraft noise at its source," close quote, at Section 13.2. And here's the bottom line. Congress has given complete authority to the federal government to determine the level of significance of noise impacts. That's in 44715A1A. And it says, quote, "to relieve and protect the public health and welfare from aircraft noise and sonic boom, the administrator of the Federal Aviation Administration, as he deems necessary." Prescribe, one, measure aircraft noise and sonic boom, and, two, regulations to control and abate aircraft noise. Now, the important part is that the FAA pursuant to that authority has prescribed the 65 DNL noise level as the appropriate level of significance. That's in FAA Order 5190.6B, Section 13.9. And in order to correctly play my role of Charles Boyer and gaslight you all further, I will tell you that local operators do have the power to set a lower level of significance, but, quote, "cannot apply a different standard to aircraft noise than it does to all other noise sources in the community," close quote, FAA Order 5190.6B, Section 13.9. So the fact of the matter is that we are constrained by the FAA's determinations, except to the extent that we can meet the standards set forth in the section I just read. Now, what does that mean for us? We don't know yet, because we haven't seen all the options that the airport is crafted, and, by the way, is still in the process of crafting, according to its spokesman. But it is important to note that the airport has claimed that 65 is somehow too loud to sustain residential development, based on the FAA's experimentation with what it calls the national curve. Basically, it's just a logo for some research that the FAA has been doing for the last 10 years and continues to do. And if it is ever concluded, will displace the current Schultz curve, which says that the significance of airport noise lies within the 65. But too late. The city cannot rely on the national curve because, under the FAA orders, quote... The city cannot rely on the national curve because, under the FAA orders, quote, "unless and until any changes become effective, all existing FAA orders, regulations, and policies remain in effect," close quote. That's in the Federal Register publication of the national curve on January 1st, 2021, oh, January 31st, 2021. Similarly, the airport would like to ignore... Let's put it this way, the airport criticizes 14 CFR Part 77, the FAA's obstruction regulation, because it doesn't include the one-engine-and-operative, OEI, procedures. But it can't because each of those procedures is determined by the airline itself based on the type of aircraft being flown and the configuration of runways and taxiways at that particular airport. Therefore, the actual Part 77 can't include OEI, although it is possible to petition the FAA for inclusion for your particular airport, which this airport has not done, but the City of Phoenix did. So, closing. It is extremely important that despite our likes or dislikes, we depend on the FAA's preemptive authority and not substitute a local determination unapproved by FAA that affects not merely residential development, which in this case is vast, but also schools and churches, which this community has a right to benefit from. So we are urging you, number one, to continue this hearing until we've had a chance to review, and who knows, maybe like some of the proposals that have just been made. And two, in its consideration, pay close attention to the preemptive authority of the federal government, which can be very difficult if it is violated. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Appears to be no questions. Thank you for your input.
Okay, so do you want to go, Mr. Petrich?
Mr. Commissioners and Mr. Chairman, my name is Rob Petrich. I still live in the City of Prescott. Happy to see you all again. I'd like to first respond to some of your questions that you had of staff and to respond to some of the staff comments. First, there's a question regarding the navigation easement from one of the commissioners, I think that was Tom Riley, that you asked about the navigation easement. And you did not get a correct answer. The answer was that the navigation proposed by the city is typical, not unusual. That's incorrect. First, remember, there's already a navigation easement that was done as part of the development agreement with James Depot Ranch. It was offered, volunteered by Depot Ranch, it was not required, and it's been recorded and it gives notice to the public that you're buying in an area that is near an airport that you shall expect noise, vibration, dust, lights, possible interference with your daily enjoyment. The city's proposed navigation easement goes way too far. And what the city has told us that they want in the new navigation, which would be a second navigation easement recorded, are two additional things, which amount to a taking from every homeowner in Depot Ranch, including the 2,500 homes already sold and occupied by 5,000 people at least. Those two things are, one, the city wants anybody within the airport vicinity overlay district to release the city from any and all liability that they may have as a result of aircraft operations at the airport, specifically any complaints regarding noise. So what does that mean? It means it's taking away from private persons their First Amendment rights of free speech. You can no longer complain to the airport if you have a complaint because you signed a navigation easement. And the second is even a stronger taking because it requires that the property owner indemnify the city for many claims. What does that mean? That means the property owner has to reimburse you financially for any claims. I was most impressed by the comments we heard from the pastor about how that is really a taking of private property rights. He's correct. You'll not be able to get insurance. Insurance companies don't like those kind of waivers from a property owner. How is the city going to compensate private property owners for imposition of this new navigation easement? It is a taking, it's compensable. Nobody from staff has told you where the money's coming from or how they're going to calculate this taking. There's been discussion about fair disclosure. Basically, City of Prescott is no different than any other community because there's only certain ways that you can communicate that there's a restriction on your property. And the first is when you list your property for sale, you're required to disclose any restrictions. Second, if you have a buyer, at least in Arizona, you're required to, the seller is required to prepare and give to the buyer with a statement that's called a seller's property disclosure statement. And in that, you're supposed to disclose anything that might be considered a nuisance or an imposition on the property value. And there's a specific question, are you near an airport? So the potential buyer gets that from the seller. If the seller and the buyer still want to proceed, then they have a contract and they take it to the title company, and then the title company does a preliminary title report. And the contract says that, Mr. Buyer, here's your preliminary title report. If there's anything in here you don't like, you have the right within 10 days to cancel this purchase contract. So within 10 days, the buyer gets to review the title report. He'll see, he or she will see that there's a navigation easement, and the buyer can say, gee, I don't like this navigation easement, I'm not going to buy. Alls the buyer has to do is notify the title company that he's subjected to the preliminary title report and the contract is canceled. We've heard from a lot of speakers today that say, and before today, that they knew they bought near the airport. They knew that there would be noise, and they're not complaining about that situation. We saw the timeline presented today by Mr. Worley, and I realized for the first time that the city began working on an navigation easement a long time ago. And it's not an easy document, it obviously took time. But the city also met with James Depot Ranch and Chamberlain Construction in March or April and said to us, we've got a problem at the airport, help us solve it. We need to buy additional property, we'd like to get it appraised, we'd like you to cooperate and sell us the property we need. And everybody in the room said, you know, that's a big surprise, it takes away from the development possibilities, but we're willing to work with the city. And while we're waiting for those appraisals, it's apparent that the city, without telling us, was working on an instrument that would take away private property rights through this AVO. And the only way we learned about it is when it finally came to a joint meeting of your body with the city council. And the only way we learned about it, it was not from the city, it was from the Prescott Courier. So we feel like there was months and months that we were waiting for the city and cooperation, and instead the city was not cooperating with us and was working on a document that would take away private property rights. Nonetheless, as Mr. Polk told you, we've continued to be willing to meet with the city. We have met with the city. I'm not nearly as optimistic as Mr. Polk. We're willing to have those discussions, but the city has not agreed to stay these proceedings to adopt an AVO while those discussions go on. So you and we still have to come back at every one of these meetings, go through the process. And it might be a complete waste of time. The more logical thing for the city would do, pause the AVO, have your negotiations. If you reach agreement, great. If you don't reach agreement, start up your AVO again. But in the meantime, you and we are all wasting our time. Excuse me, you and we what? We're wasting our time. Wasting our time. We had discussions from Mr. Worley about the open house, and he was counting that as part of the public discussion. And Commissioner Riley, you were correct, that is not part of the public meeting process. And the reason it's not is because in a public meeting, you take all comment from all parties. The open house the city had was a presentation by one party. City did not invite Chamberlain Construction. City did not invite James Depot Ranch. City did not invite Dignity and Hospital and YMC. City did not invite any of the homeowners in Saddlewood who are of record opposing the AVO. So if you went to the open house, what you heard was exactly what the airport folks wanted you to hear, nothing else. So that is not public comment. That is a sales presentation from the city trying to promote the AVO. We have stated before that the notice given in these meetings is not accurate, it continues to be inaccurate. If I'm correct, all of this is going to come back to you again. We're going to have to redo it all again. We heard from the airport director that in 2026, it is estimated that there'd be 440,000 operations at the Prescott Airport. We know we only have a few commercial flights, so most of those have got to be the Embry-Riddle touch and goes. The commission and the public should be aware, there's a solution to the Embry-Riddle touch and goes. And we've made this offer to the city before. Why not find a location far away from everybody for a touch and go airport, excuse me, a touch and go airfield for the Embry-Riddle planes? You'll get them out from the residential areas. They can still be based at the airport, but their touch and goes will be someplace else. There's a lot of land in Depot Ranch, there are other ranchers that have a lot of land, no one has ever pursued that. That would solve Embry-Riddle's problem, that would solve the public's problem. There seems to be a lot of concern about where residential will be and where it will not be. It is already established by the James Depot Ranch contract with the city where the residential property is owned for. The city would like to take that away. There are some folks that apparently don't like the 2017 contract that the city made. Whether you like it or not, it's a contract. Once you contract, you don't get to change your mind. We know there's been a change of council, that doesn't mean that the new council gets to change contracts previously made. We've heard talk about reducing the DNL or changing the DNL at the airport and what uses it would prohibit. Does that mean that the city will now close down the city's Centennial Center? Will the city close down the golf course? Will the city cause all the condos that it caused to be built in the beginning that are located at the airport? We heard from the city that the hospital will be able to do exactly what they want to do. We'll hear from the hospital folks shortly, but I don't think that's correct. What the city says, we just need to move a few things around at the hospital that'll work. Well, maybe the city ought to ask the hospital. In fact, city has never gone to YMC to talk about this. So what you hear from staff is their presumption only of what they think the hospital should There were comments on the slides in the documents about correctional facilities would be allowed. I don't know why we're even talking about that. Nobody's proposing correctional facilities anywhere in this area. These are residential areas? No one's going to put a correctional facility in a residential area. That seems to be something to scare the public. We've heard from Barbara Lickman, she filed a report with you, I don't know if you got it. Did you get her written report as part of your packet from Barbara Lickman?
I can't recall that off the top of my head, but I will be happy to look into it. I've gotten a slew of things.
It was in the packet we sent you two days ago.
Okay.
You have received it?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, yes.
And she states in there that the 65 DNL is the standard that FAA uses, that FAA has not changed the 65 DNL. Yet, we're trying to predict here in the City of Prescott what FAA might do before they do it. And we're going to do this whole AVO thing, and we're going to take away property rights based upon what a few people at City Hall think FAA might do. First of all, we don't know whether FAA is going to do anything. They've been working on this for years. But if they do make a change, doesn't it make sense that that's when the city would look at the DNL's instead of trying to guess? We've been told that the purpose of the whole AVO is to address the noise complaints. But we don't have any data from the city on what the noise complaints are. How many noise complaints does the city get each day? Do you have that data? You don't.
On a daily basis, every day. I've been told.
Monthly, annual?
Annual.
Tom Riley.
That ought to be shared.
It has been in public, that has been shared here.
And of those complaints, how many come from the same person or persons on a repeated basis? Because in reality, I think you just have a few people that are complaining, they just happen to complain frequently. And I submit to you, you don't need an AVO to control noise complaints. Every airport in the country gets noise complaints. It's the job of the airport staff to receive those, determine which are valid, take up... It's the job of the airport staff to receive those, determine which are valid, take appropriate action. And at least, even if they're not valid, talk politely to the people calling. They're a citizen. They're exercising their First Amendment rights. I didn't get the lady's name that spoke in a public session right at the first from Saddlewood. She was concerned that her home would lose value. She's correct. One, as soon as you're in an airport overlay district, that has to be disclosed to your buyers. Buyers are going to say, what is this? These other homes I'm looking at are not subject to an airport overlay district. Why would I consider your home over the others that don't have this special district? That has an effect to lower property values. Second, there'll be a new navigation easement that I just talked about. That's going to lower property values. There was a speaker on Zoom that was a homeowner that said the 2000 Development Agreement somehow took advantage of the city. You know, that's shocking to me because I was a part of that process for two years, working with every department head in the city, meeting all of their conditions and concerns, meeting with this body many, many times. Every condition the city ever asked for was satisfied, or the city determined that the recommendation of a condition was not a valid condition. So when it finally got to the city council, the city council approved it on a vote of six to one. During that two-year process, the city attorney was John Palladini. He is one of the most respected city attorneys in the state of Arizona. Matt Pedraki was a deputy city attorney. He's well qualified, has many years of experience here. Mr. Worley was part of that process. Mr. Worley signed off and recommended adoption of the 2017 Development Agreement and Master Plan. So did the airport director. So did every department head because all conditions were met. Stephen, we have a few slides to show the commission if we can start with those. You've seen this before. I've highlighted in yellow your requirements to have a public hearing. And I've highlighted and read the time within which you must make your decision. Stephen, can you scroll down? There, paragraph C says after your hearing that you will render decision in the form of a written recommendation. Recommendation shall include the reasons for your recommendation and be transmitted to the governing body in the form and manner prescribed by the governing body, and that's the city council. So you have a duty to have your public hearing and make your recommendations in writing. Keep scrolling until you see the red that gives you the time limit within which you must make your decision. If you'll notice, there's nothing in red.
Good recovery.
The point I'm making, staff has given you their schedule. You're an independent body. You get to make your own schedule. So you have as much time as you want to make your decision. Here's the schedule that was presented by staff. And according to this schedule, today you're supposed to vote. And then 12 days from now, the city council is to have one public hearing and then a So the city council is not anticipating anything other than one meeting. You've seen this before. I know you don't want to see it again, but I need to make a public record of the applicable law. So I appreciate your patience. This is your oath of office that all of you have signed to uphold the Constitution. And the reason that's important is you're required to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Arizona, both of which say private property cannot be taken without compensation. Here's the navigation easement that's already been recorded. So you should have been provided this by city staff. But you'll see, it's pretty comprehensive. It shows that the property owner has been advised that you're located close to the airport, and there may be influences from the airport such as noise, vibration, fumes, deposits of dust or other particulate matter, fuel particles, fear, interference with sleep and communication, possibility of greater numbers of aircraft in the future. Very, very comprehensive. Why does the city need more than that? Why does the city need to make all these homeowners subject to even a stronger taking by requiring them to identify and hold harmless to the city? Next slide. This is the development agreement. You didn't have it last time. Has the staff been provided it to you now? All right. Stephen, if you can go through the relevant provision. Development rights regarding zoning. Once approved, zoning shall be deemed contractually vested. The city will not initiate any changes or modifications to the master plan except at the request of or with the consent of the owners. As I mentioned last time, you don't have that consent. I think somebody remarked, well, then why are we here? I have the same question. The reason we're here is because city staff apparently doesn't believe this is a contract because they keep bringing it back to you. Paragraph 2.7, the city agrees that shall not attempt to acquire or require through zoning or otherwise any requirements, reservations, conditions, or further dedications of portions of the property, which are called exacations. The airport vicinity overlay district is a new restriction. It is prohibited by this agreement. Next page. 8.9, no change or addition is to made to this agreement except by written agreement executed by the city and the owners. You don't have that. That would be a prerequisite to everything we're doing. Here's the Arizona statute, which you've sworn in your oath of office to uphold. ARS Section 9-500.05, city may enter into a development agreement. Development agreement may be amended, counseled in whole or in part by mutual consent of the parties. You don't have mutual consent. Why are we here? Next slide. Here is an exact excerpt from the Arizona Constitution, Article 2, Section 17. No private property shall be taken or damages for public or private use without just compensation having first been made, I repeat, first been made, and paid into court. None of that's happened. Why are we here? We know that some folks in City Hall don't like the master plan, the development agreement. We know some folks don't like the statute. Some folks want to ignore the Constitution. As someone else has said, you're going to have to decide in your heart whether that oath of office that you took means anything. Of course, you want to please the city. You were appointed to this body by the city. It's a natural instinct that you would like to please the city of Prescott. You're part of the city. But stronger than that is your duty to the Constitution. One of the overriding concerns the city had in 2015, when they came to James Depot Ranch and asked that there be a development agreement, was that the city needed affordable And that was built into the master plan. The proposed AVO will take away affordable residential housing. It will also prohibit the developer from extending infrastructure. Because if he doesn't have homes that he can build, he can't go long distances with infrastructure. He has to go sequentially from one subdivision to the next. What does that mean? If you prohibit residential, you don't get residential around the hospital. If there's no residential around the hospital, hospital's not going to build a hospital. Hospital needs people in the vicinity to support the hospital. We know and understand that a lot of you feel like the airport folks have made some good points that you're concerned about. And that's okay. If you want to say, we need to do this, that's okay. You get to make that decision. But only if, as part of your plan, the city tells us, and you tell the city, that any takings of private property will be fairly compensated. You really can't do that now because you don't have appraisals. You don't know how much it's going to cost. You don't know where the money's going to come from. Is it 80 million? Throw in the hospital, is that another 100 million? Where's it coming from? The reason we have the Bill of Rights is because before our country was established, countries in Europe were kingdoms, and the king could take private property without The king could seize private property. King could confiscate private property. So the founders of the Constitution said, no, not in the United States of America. If their government wants private property, they're going to have to pay for it. So we're still at it with you. So somebody's telling you, don't worry about how we're going to compensate these people. Let the city council deal with it. But how can you possibly make a recommendation? If you don't know that these private property owners are going to be compensated and how they're going to be compensated? So the city has just started getting appraisals. Looking now at the recommendations of staff. You've got three options. But there's more than the three options, which you've not been given. One option is not to recommend the AVO. Another option is if you do recommend adoption, that you do so with conditions. And that condition being that all of Depot Ranch master plan property be compensated for any takings, that any other public, any other private person who suffers a taking be compensated. And another option, which Ms. Barbara Lichtman suggested, is you don't have enough information yet. So you could wait and get that information. You could tell staff, don't bring us something until it's a complete package. So you have three more options in addition to the one that staff has given to you. My last point is, we have heard that the airport needs protection from encroachment of residential use. That's not true. The reason it's not true, the residential uses have been established legally. You can't take away that. What's happening is the airport is encroaching on people that live in those residential areas. The airport is encroaching on future subdivisions that the city wanted in 2017. The residential uses have not increased since 2017. Instead, the airport has decided it needs a huge area of no man's land all around it. And the way to do that is to take away the residential permissions that are vested in contract, and take away those rights and create vacant property in a wide swath all around the airport. So it's pretty clear that it's the airport encroaching on residential property. Residential property is not encroaching on the airport. In conclusion, if you take a vote today, I don't know if you will. It's late, and you still have public comment. If you do, the evidence is that you should recommend that the AVO not be approved because you don't have sufficient information, because it seems to violate a contract, because it violates the Constitution. Or if you feel like it needs to be approved, set the conditions that everybody in Depot Ranch master plan is going to be compensated for the taking. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, Kaylee?
We have Jonathan Millet with Y R M C.
Would you like to take a bathroom break first?
No, I think.
That's nice of you. Well, I just have Jonathan. Tammy, is there anyone else on Zoom?
We have one on Zoom.
Okay.
I think we'll go ahead and continue due to the timeframe we're at here. Is that okay with everybody? All righty. Yes, sir.
If we can agree not to cover material we've covered before.
I'll do my best not to waste your time, Commissioner. My name's Jonathan Millet. I am a resident of the city of Prescott. My address is listed from my first presentation.
Mr. Millet, question. What, do you represent a law firm?
I, no. I am a partner at the law firm of Boyle Petrovich. I, no, I am a, I am a partner at the law firm of Boyle, Petrich, Klein, Winnington and Stallings.
Is that the same law fir, law firm we heard from Mr. Petrich?
Correct. We have represented the hospital for well over about 30 years. And we've, we negotiated the agreement with Deepwell Ranch because at that time we didn't represent Deepwell Ranch. That was in 2013. We began representing and assisting in the representation of Deepwell Ranch in about, I believe, 2017, but Mr. Petrich can, can confirm that. We have what is called concurrent representation, which is we can represent more than one person because we have similar interests and they don't, they don't conflict. In law school, I was a president of a club that we got debates. So you, I believe it was Commissioner Gomboji that said that facts, facts matter or deal in facts, I believe, maybe I'm not quoting it quite right. I loved the debates where people fairly represented their opponent's side and then proceeded to persuade me otherwise with fair facts. And so that is my goal today is to try and just present the facts in that, that spirit, to fairly represent what the airport's position is, in other words. I am going to start off with the op ed that Dr. Torres, who is the current president of Y R M C, put together. He starts off with his background, that he's been a physician in Prescott since 2006. And he goes on to explain of why he objects. And he says, and this is a second paragraph, "If the zoning change is approved to limit building based on future noise concerns, it will significantly delay our ability to meet the healthcare demands." He gives the background of a parcel, which we've discussed previously. "At the moment, the property's grassland awaiting infrastructure development. Short-term plan, open to open outpatient clinics and do ancillary services out of that parcel. A long-term plan is to build a hospital." And I'll get to it a little bit later when we get into the details, but residential, and when I mean residential, it's medical residential. This is skilled nursing. This is perhaps long-term nursing homes. Ideally, those need to be placed near other residential facilities. And that's typically how Y R M C tries to do it. That's how it's affiliated with dignity. That's how dignity tries to do it, too. So he notes that we've grown. He also notes that Y R M C is the largest private employer in Yavapai County, at least to our knowledge, still is. The, and he notes that the amended district will nullify our ability to build a hospital on the site due to the noise concerns or the noise overlay. He notes that there's a debate and he says that there's no question. It hinders, it will hinder access to healthcare services at a time when those demand, when the demand for those services will reach all-time highs. He talks about how when it comes to acute care, minutes matter and that many of the patients that come and drive into Y R M C do come from the areas that are admittedly outside of Prescott, but also that are in, in the areas that are near Prescott Valley. He discusses a little bit of how it was purchased as a gift, a part gift and part purchase from Deepwell Ranch and the James Foundation. He notes that we've never imposed property taxes. And then he says, he says, "More people means more demands for medical services, and if we don't keep pace with population, healthcare will suffer." Let me give you some other background. You know, a picture's worth quite a few words here, so let me show you. This is the picture. I'm, this is taken from the approximate south boundary line of Y R M C's property looking directly to the east. So on, let me pull open this. So if we are in the aerial map, it would be in the area that is right approximately here. So this is just a photograph taking to the east. Next, I'll show you a video of what it looks like just panning to the right. So you can get a, kind of get an idea of how far it is from the airport. As you can see, you can't really see the airport. I, my, admittedly, my distance eyesight is not that good, but I was unable to see the airport from that location. I measured it and, and just using the Yavapai County GIS. whether you measure it from the one corner or the other, it's about 0.8 to 1 miles from I think it might help to have some background on what the existing mitigation requirements are for Deepwell Ranch because we've talked a lot about, about several issues. And I think if we zoom back and take a big picture view, you're trying to balance the concerns of three different groups. You have, on one hand, it's safety. So that's the general public's interest in safety that, for aircraft and aircraft not crashing or crashing, not crashing on perhaps an occupied area. You have the concern for the airport, and the airport's concern is it'll continue to be economically viable. It'll continue to be able to grow in terms of traffic. You also have the concerns of property rights. And I admit, I'm advocating for property rights. Today, I'd like to talk a little bit about something that I still don't understand why it's being done this way. Noise has nothing to do with safety. I think we can all agree that a noise contour does not determine whether a plane is going to come down in that area. So this is from the airport, this was at the, at the open house. This was one of the displays. I took a picture of it. And it talks about impact zones, talks about, you know, the risks, I guess, percentage-wise of impacts. And it says that zones one and two account for 30% to 50% of all near-airport accident sites in the United States. So let's talk a little bit about impact zones first. And I'm going to focus on the Crosswinds runway, and that's the runway that directly affects Y R M C's property. So this is the current, the current impact zones. So Zone 1 and Zone 2 are the most, the areas where it's most likely to have an actual incident occur. And this is the one that the FAA recommends that it stays clear and, or mostly clear, especially Zone 1. It helps to have a little bit of a scale here as well. I looked at the scale. Zone 2, for example, it is about a quarter of a mile wide. That's about four football lengths wide. So that's, that's a wide area. Zone 3, if you use the Zone 3, which, which Robin Sabata has mentioned is the skirt or the apron, that is, that is half a mile wide. So that would be eight football field lengths. So it's quite, it's fairly wide. So the FAA, what the FAA does is the FAA says in Zones 1 and 2 that you shouldn't have anything that's going to really interfere with that. But they, they do allow development in Zones 3. And the reason why is it's, it's less likely for that incident to occur, as you saw in the other, the other display, that Zone 3 has 4% to 8% of the impacts. So you have safety, and I'll revisit that a little bit later, but you also have noise. And it seems to me that there's no reason to tie them together. You can describe the impact zones and have uses permitted or prohibited based on those impact zones. You can also have noise addressed. Now, what's the best way to address noise? Well, if my neighbor's dog barks a lot, which it does every time I step out of the house, I can have, if it, if it tends to bark during the day, I could have better sound insulation. And I would, I would disagree with Mr. Worley. It's not that hard to actually measure the sound mitigation because when you're approving an actual construction, you can have certain requirements of how the actual building is built. In fact, that already exists for the Deepwell Ranch. So this is from, this is from the master plan. And under noise compatibility, it actually has a very detailed list of what Deepwell has to do. So that's any developer, whether it's Chamberlain or it's an actual developer that's purchased from Chamberlain is, is doing the actual development. They have to do, they have to do exterior stud walls that there's at least one-half thick gypsum, which is much thicker than a typical board.
No, no. I'm an architect. I know the answer to that question. It is not.
And contain at least fibrous thermal insulation of at least three inches thick. Now, I, I, it appears that I do have a peanut gallery. That's okay. I am not an expert in this. I'm just pointing out that this is something that the city and Deepwell Ranch have already considered. And you've already agreed upon this, and it's actually something that Deepwell has had to follow. And it has, it goes through, there's, there's, there is a detailed list, and it does go ahead and explain that, and it goes through. This is an example of noise mitigation. Now, what could be done with a current ordinance? Instead of prohibiting a use within a particular noise contour, you could just require noise abatement. In fact, that is exactly what other municipalities have done. Flagstaff allows residential in 55 to 65. They do require noise abatement. They allow residential to 65 to 70 zone. Again, noise abatement.
Excuse me, Mr. Millet. Just for frame of reference, are you representing the hospital in this presentation or Deepwell Ranch?
I'm representing the hospital and only the hospital. Why is this important? This is a very good question. Why am I talking about this? I'll jump to that. This is the current, these are the current impact zones. Just like you can't get anything done without your neighbor when you're actually doing construction, if anybody's ever tried to build a house that's out in the middle of nowhere, you quickly find out that the cost for utilities and infrastructure to bring it, bring it out to your house is prohibitive. And so they, that's why we have a lot of empty land in Yavapai County. I grew up in southern Arizona and I lived on the side of Rio Rico, which is a little bit north of Nogales. It was empty, but they had roads everywhere that went to nowhere. And they had lots that had been sold to people from back east about that this was going to be the next booming area. And they had these just weed, lots full of weeds and roads that went to nowhere. Why? Why was there, and to this day, very few of them have ever been built on. They're actually functionally worthless for most people. You have to actually dig a well, and you actually have to make sure you bring the, all the utilities out, and it's very expensive. So we need utilities and infrastructure, and that is where I disagree with Mr. Young. Because while the city has a promise to extend the infrastructure and pay for a portion of it, and I can go ahead and bring that up. Here's the map. You'll notice that the property, this is the airport, this is Y R M C's property near, right about here. Let me go ahead and, this. So this is roughly the, the area. Those are, those are all dash lines. Those are all, those are proposed, that's not existing. It's going to take a significant outlay from the city. Until that happens, I'll admit, the city promises to reimburse the property owner or property owners that, that pay for that infrastructure to be put in. That's still a significant outlay of money to be put in for what might be when you first start out, just because this, you do, almost every hospital campus is developed and phased, might be some outpatient hospital, outpatient medical buildings. It's pretty difficult. For example, Y R M C's share for wastewater and, and water is $5 million. It's hard to justify building an outpatient medical building for $5 million if you're, you know, if you're going to be paying that $5 million. On top of that, another roundabout would be required. Roundabout in current dollars would be about $4 million, and we all know what happens to the, the infrastructure. When you're trying to build a road, it seems like it doubles, oh, I don't know, about every five to seven years. I'm not up on that as much as perhaps the city of Prescott is, but I see the costs seem to double very quickly. So when the hospital gets around to building it, they're going to have to do it with the help of their neighbors. It's similar as well for, for the water. I'll, I won't say, I won't waste your time by pulling that up. So back to the neighbors. This is, you'll, you'll see something interesting. This is the adjacent zoning, and I'm going to go ahead and take out the impact zones so that you can see that. You'll notice that the civic matches the existing impact zones for Zone 3 and open space. So Zone 1 corresponds to open space. So the Deepwell master plan already provided for Zone 1 and provided for Zone 2 to allow civic, which is typical in other municipalities. And then, in addition, for the, the sides of the cone, so the skirt or the apron, it's still also civic. Then you have residential or commercial that's off to the side, and then residential is only permitted beyond that Zone 3. But we, there's a problem. And one of that problem is that the proposed zoning has a different impact zone. And since that really hasn't been explored much, I'd like to go into that. To give you some background, this started, this is from a March 30, 2022 meeting. This is, I believe, this city staff prepared this. So what happened was the airport's leadership, and I'm just focusing on the highlighted language, discovered in 2021 that the Crosswinds Airport impact zones had been drawn incorrectly and that it was also part of, it had been drawn incorrectly in 2017. So when Deepwell and the city were sitting down to try and figure out the impact zones and what's going to be in the, in those different impact zones for safety, they were using a map that had been drawn a little bit incorrectly. And it affected Zones, Zones 4 and 6 had the right dimensions, but they weren't in the right place. And it, Zone 1 was measured properly, but Zones 2 and 3 were too short. Let me show you what that looks like. So this is the current, this is the current impact zone. So this was the incorrectly measured impact zone. And you can see the overlay. There's a significant difference. That, that's roughly about half a mile of an extension for that Zone 3. Okay, so I have an answer, but I don't think Robin Sabata is going to like it. It's actually a real common sense answer. So instead of costing millions to try and take this additional property, let's try this. So where does this come from? So that, going back to this table, So that, going back to this table, and I'll zoom in a little bit. You can see that all of that's calculated from a table. The first table, which was the one that was used when they incorrectly measured it, was the runway less than 4,000. And then when you bump up to the next level, then the FAA requires much larger impact zones. Okay, so let's, I'm going to take a quick back step. And let's talk a little bit about the crosswinds runway. So the crosswinds runway, this is from an appendix to the area specific plan from 2017. This is a memo from 2001. And it talks about the third runway. This is the crosswinds runway. It's actually a combination of two runways, runway 12 and runway 30. And it is, as you'll note, 4,408 feet long. So it's about 400 feet too long. If it's 400 feet shorter, it's, all the impact zones would have been measured correctly. And the solution, oh, by the way, this is a little more information. Runway 12 and 30 together, according to this 2001 memo, handle about 10% of the traffic at that time. And why is that? Is because overweight aircraft are not supposed to use a crossed winds runway because it's not designed for that. Instead, it's lighter aircraft. But it could be, it could be a private jet. It could be, you know, just, it could be students that are taking off in a Cessna. It is still suitable for lighter aircraft. Back in 2001, together combined, they had about a one month of worth of operations. So the main runway is what really gets most of the actual traffic. So... And I've talked to, I've talked to a couple pilots that they say this solution would work. I think it deserves exploration. This is the solution. Take out 10% of the striping. If you take out 10%, if you just stripe out 10%, and this is what 10% represents. You stripe it out, and I would say in an emergency, someone still might use it if it's striped out. But you stripe it out so that they don't, they're not supposed to use it. It is now less than 4,000 feet. And that distance is still sufficient. And by the way, that's two runways. That's still, this is runway 30 is approximately from this distance to there. And runway 12 is, as I understand it, is about from this end to there. So you'd still have a full length of runway 12 and you'd be shortening runway 30 by a little bit on a lesser used runway. Stripe it out, and then you don't have to change those impact zones. If you don't have to change the impact zones, you don't have to go to Chamberlain Development and try to discuss what they might think is a taking. And you can leave the way it currently, the uses currently are as they are. And you'll still have the same safety protection for the public and for everyone who is using that area. If you want greater safety, you could use the new proposed impact zones, not shorten that runway. And that's okay. By the way, it's the airport that would be shortening the runway. But since the airport in essence is asking for this different zoning ordinance, why not ask them to give up a little bit so that we can actually have fewer issues to fight about? Next, let me talk about...
Sir?
Yes?
I hate to interrupt, but I'm having trouble understanding how changing the impact zone affects the hospital right now.
Oh, yes. I'll do that. Good question. Okay. How does that affect the hospital? I referred to the donut effect in one of my other hearings. And this is how that, this is how that affects the hospital. This is the current, the current uses next to the hospital. So in other words, you partner with your neighbors, this is how neighborhoods get built, you partner with your neighbors to bring in utilities. Whether it's cable, whether it's power, whether it's water, whether it's infrastructure, you're usually piggybacking off of what another neighboring owner has done. And so the hospital was actually in discussions with Chamberlain Development of how to share the cost of that when all of this came up. So this summer, we were actually in discussions, trying to discuss, okay, let's talk, let's sit down, let's talk about some cost sharing so that, you know, once that development starts happening, that we can go ahead and bring it out. Because the hospital does want that developed sooner rather than later. The problem with the impact zones is that if you do a new impact zone, the airport and the proposed ordinance would take out all residential in Zone 3. Except they don't actually measure it that way. What they're measuring is noise. And they're using noise to prohibit development. When all it would take is a shortening of the runway. And if you shorten the runway and you don't regulate based on noise, then you're just left with a current. And there's no, we don't want to be the hole in the donut. Because if that means we have to pay for everything. And that's often what happens. So even if just the hospital was accepted from this and said, "YMC, we get it. We're going to go ahead and give you an exception. This doesn't apply to you." We're still left with a problem of trying to bring in utilities and infrastructure. And that is actually just basically makes this worthless property for the hospital. In fact, it makes it even more difficult because the hospital really can't even sell it. Because it's, we are required to use it for a hospital and for medical development. Now, realistically, does it mean it'll never get developed? No, probably not. But it's going to be a while before the costs are justified to bring in that infrastructure over that property. Because it's going to be a while before anything gets built there. Residential usually drives commercial. And that residential was, they were starting to work on getting that ready to be submitted to the city. That's why it matters. So we're just asking in that point of that our neighbors have the right to be able to develop it for a use that is suitable for that property. And right now, I think that's residential. So let's talk about noise contours, unless someone else has more questions about that. So this is 2018.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, this is stuff that we've already seen, like
Oh, yes.
half an hour ago?
Oh, yes. I'd like to make a point. May I? You saw it. This is, this is the city's noise contours from 2018. Well, the notes, and this is from the party that developed it, they use the design tool that the FAA requires. They have an annual takeoff and landing of 262,000. This is back in 2018. Did the math and I used the number that Robin Sabata had. And it's about five and a quarter percent increase every year over the last three years that have been measured, I guess. So about 5% a year. Look at Note 4. Note 4 says that these noise contours represent projections for 2036. They took, I don't know, this is conjecture. They took their existing pattern of the increase of takeoffs and landings, and they projected it through 2036. And this, these are the contours that they got. So I thought it might be helpful to have the way it is right now and the way it's being proposed. So zoom out a bit so that you can have the full airport there. I just added 2018 and 2000. This is 2018, the 2018, 65 and 75. You can see those lines are within the airport property. That's the airport property. Almost entirely contained within the airport property, except for one portion of the other runway. This is the, this is the proposed 70 DNL. So this is, this is the change that you're being asked to approve. So that's 70. That's 65. That's 60. And that's 55. This is a huge change. This is why my recommendation is, is that you should have the data from the FAA's tool. If there is a mistake made in 2018, let's revisit it. Why don't you have, or what, and I don't know, maybe you have been presented with it, but if not, why don't you ask for, from staff, the contours based on the FAA's design tool? I understand. A noise study was done and you have actual noise. Both the FAA's, the FAA's tool is what the FAA uses to evaluate whether or not you're actually, like the airport's actually cooperating and complying with those requirements. So this would be the equivalent of someone who is going way above and beyond what's required. It's the honor student that wants 120% on their test, not 100%. And right now, through 2036, that's 100%. You get 100% for that checkbox on the FAA, according to that 2018 study that the city paid for. So back to other municipalities. The city, the airport came up with another group of cities. And their group of cities, let's see. Okay, so you have Mesa, Falcon Field, Deer Valley, Phoenix Mesa Gateway, Chandler Municipal Airport. And I can't, you know what? I haven't dug down yet to be able to figure out if that's apples to apples. I can tell you what the FAA does, though. According to the FAA, they have classifications of airport. We are a small non-hub airport. And these are the other, if you look at the other star airports, this is what the FAA thinks. So for the purposes of grant money, I would say apples to apples is another similarly classified airport by the FAA. So we went ahead and that's what we did. And that's, this is what this table is taken from. Henderson is also another one. So you have Flagstaff, it's all green. Henderson's all green. Tucson's all green. Even Scottsdale allows for residential in the 55 all the way up to the 65 zone. Only when you get to over 65 do they say no. And you'll notice in Zone Impact 3, again, that's the area that's just south of YMC's parcel. Everybody allows it, except for this proposed ordinance. I would submit that this proposed ordinance is not in the best interests when you balance those three factors of property rights, of the public, and airport safety. My recommendations, let's get an updated noise contour using the FAA model. Untangle the noise in the impact zones. Impact is for safety. Noise is for abatement. Shorten the crosswinds runway by 10%. You save, you save yourself a whole headache of problems. And finally, and this is probably the easiest one, just exempt the parcels that are already subject to a development agreement. So that this does not apply to them. If you do that, it makes it a lot easier to go ahead and recommend it. And you're a lot less subject to the problems that the FAA notes. This is from the FAA's guidebook. This is a their guide, this is their guidebook for airports, land use compatibility. So they recommend that they, that you restrict the use of land adjacent to or in the immediate vicinity of the airport. They require a noise, land use noise sensitivity matrix of, and if you note this, everything is okay within that 55 to 65 zone. Absolutely no restrictions. In fact, they say it's compatible. According to federal regulation, that these uses are all compatible. The airport would have you change that and go beyond what the FAA requires. Now finally, and this is the risk that personally as a taxpayer, I don't like. I don't like this risk and I don't want the city to take it. It talks about organized public opposition by property owners. Okay, that's me arguing on behalf of a private property owner, the hospital. It's a threat to private property rights. They deserve monetary compensation for any potential property devaluation. I would argue that. Basic zoning doctrine demands that individual land parcels be left with a viable economic value. So zone for use that there's reasonable demand and economic return. Otherwise, courts may determine a zoning change for compatibility to be a taking of property. I don't want the city to be tied up in taking claims. And that's why I would urge you to adopt those recommendations and then suggest it, and then recommend it on to the council. Back to, and I realize I didn't close, I didn't really treat with the one issue, which was the question. So this is the 60. This is the one that takes in, the 60 is what, under the current ordinance, would prohibit residential, based on noise, throughout that entire red zone. That's about 20, roughly 20% of the property. And the problem is, is that's where YMC actually intended to put the medical residential uses. Because again, we want to pair it with the other existing residential uses. And that's exactly where it would have been. But for the expanded impact zone, and but for the decision to have a noise ordinance that ties up noise with safety. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. We're getting on into time here. We have someone on Zoom?
Yes, if they're, well, I'll have Tammy check. She's
Well, I'm wondering if they wouldn't mind talking next time. No?
Well
Let him go.
Wait a long time.
All right.
Okay, so we're gonna, Tammy?
Yes.
Yes. Are they still waiting?
Yes. William Lawrence? Do you emit yourself?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm glad the lawyer and the last gentleman talked about
Can you, can you state your full name and your address, please?
I'm sorry. William Lawrence. I live at 6824 Golden Tree Drive. I'm in the Westwood Development. I just want to add one thing on the noise contour. I believe it's somewhat not all that accurate. I know, you know, you guys took noise readings. But I believe the noise readings, the input that was used to create this model is somewhat inaccurate because of all the low-flying planes that fly around my neighborhood. They fly at like 300, 400 feet when they should be much higher. So if the planes are flying lower, that means the noise is going to be a lot louder. So if you're using this as an input mechanism to, for this model, I believe the model overall is inaccurate. And what it's done is taken each one of these noise contour boundaries and pushed them out further away from the airport. That was the only thing I wanted to add. There was people earlier on that hit the other points I wanted to hit. I do believe that using the FAA model would be a huge benefit to this proposal. And I believe that's what we should be doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. We're getting on in time here. I want to allow staff to make any comments they want to make before we close. I want to allow staff to make any comments they want to make before we close the meeting out, but I'm gonna suggest that we continue the public hearing on this, and also, if you have additional information you want staff to have available for the next meeting, to let them know now. How does that?
I don't know if I need any more information yet. So, let them know now.
Mr. Chairman, we're certainly open to receiving requests from you. Please email those requests individually to Haley, we'll distribute them to staff and we'll respond back to you.
Well, I can give you a couple right now. I'd like to see a copy of the Depot Ranch master plan and agreement, and the two aviation agreements.
The aviation.
Aviation agreements. Anybody else have specific things they know of right now?
Can you just hold on one moment, I'm trying to capture this all.
Okay.
After four hours of minutes, so this is, bear with me.
Her fingers are stiffening.
Oh my gosh.
After four hours, we don't call them minutes anymore.
So we want the Deepwell master plan.
The master plan, the development agreement.
Okay, we, okay, we'll resend the DA, cause that's,
We did send the DA out, at least some of you asked for it, I'm pretty sure we sent that. So the master plan is a, it's about the size of our zoning code, so it's, it's a fairly significant document.
Okay, and the,
Aviation easement.
The aviation easement?
Example, aviation easements.
Easements.
Aviation easements.
Plural.
Current one and proposed.
Okay.
There's one that was approved with the development agreement for Depot Ranch, so that'll be part of the development agreement, you'll see it there.
Notice disclosure, or is that separate?
That's the same thing, it shouldn't be the same thing.
Thank you. Okay.
All right.
We will do that.
Do we need a motion to continue?
Do you, do you want response from staff?
Yes.
Before we give those things?
I think it'd be appropriate to have responses now versus waiting a couple weeks on this. And I hope the public would bear with us on this. I want to thank you for spending all your time here, and we appreciate you coming in. But if we got responses, I'd like to have them now.
And Mr. Bradracki, we'll talk to you about a motion for continuance.
Okay.
Robin Sabata, Airport Director, and also I have Charlie McDermott here, and I think there's been some question about the noise measurement methodology, so I'd like to ask him to step up and address that briefly.
I'm Charlie McDermott with Dibble. The firm that we use, HMMH out of Boston, as I had mentioned before, is nationally recognized as the leader in, in noise calculating and modeling. They also train all of the consultants in the country on how to use the FAA's modeling program. The modeling program that they used for your new noise contours, it was used with the FAA's approved modeling software. In fact, HMMH was one of the firms that was the developer of that software. So they are clearly the national experts when it comes to modeling noise. And a lot of times when HMMH is training the consultants in the country on how to use the FAA's model, you come across situations like this, because the model basically assumes at a basic, very basic airport, planes come in, planes take off, okay? Tracks come in, tracks take off, okay? So the model takes it at a very basic level to, you type in your inputs, the fleet mix, and the operations, and it spits out a contour, okay? That is done at very, at a lot of airports, when they're very small, basic airports. My firm, I don't run noise contours, because I know that you have to have certain expertise in order to, to run a model that would calculate contours as complex as Prescott's. The firm that ran your contours in 2017 or 18 is a firm similar to mine, where the planners would get the fleet mix, they would enter in the fleet mix into the model, and they would run it, okay? And they would take, they would pick some representative tracks to, to demonstrate where the, where the aircraft would go. And they spit out a contour, and it would look very similar to what they produced in 2017 or 18, okay? The difference with HMMH is they not only used the proposed forecast and fleet mix, but they used all of the tracks, okay? So they used all of the tracks that the FAA provided them, because the data came from FAA regarding the flight tracks at Prescott. And it took about between three to four days for the program to run and produce the noise contours that you, you've seen today. No other firm in the country can do that, because HMMH has a proprietary program that runs the FAA's model, that FAA has approved, and we can get proof of that, cause I'm sure the Developers Council will ask for that. So I will get proof that the FAA has approved HMMH to use their proprietary software to run the FAA's model that creates these very complex modeling situations that you have at Prescott. So why are yours different? Yours are different because of the training exercises, because they do so much pattern work. Well, the model isn't meant to accommodate that. As I said, the model assumes planes come in, planes come out. And that's why all of the contours that you see at representative airports that the attorneys presented are very, very long shape, okay? Because they don't have the pattern work that pushes out the noise contours well beyond. And I'm also gonna ask HMMH to prepare a memo that explains all this, again, because I'm not the noise expert, they are, okay? And they will provide a memo that explains the differences in what makes Prescott noise contours unique, and evidence that they are approved to use their proprietary software to run the FAA's program, because I'm sure the council is gonna want that. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Sure.
I have a sneaky feeling we're back into conjecture and misinformation. So, help me clear this up. We got a presentation on comparison to a lot of airports. And the conclusion was that the DNL lines for Prescott are much broader than the DNL lines for the other airports. The other airports kind of look like a cigar, and ours look like a, a pear. You're saying that that's because of all the Emory Riddle takeoffs and landings?
The pattern work.
So, so to compare the two, our airport, Prescott Airport to some other airport, is like apples and oranges when it comes to DNL lines?
With the exception of Deer Valley, because I think Deer Valley could be similar, because of so much training activity. However, doesn't have a crosswind runway.
Okay, thank you.
But to compare the flight activity to any other airport, it's just, it's an apple and an orange, it's just not, not the same.
Thank you.
And that's why those contours look so different, and that's why your contours from 2017 or 18 look so different, because that consultant didn't have the ability to take into consideration all of the flight tracks for all of the operations over a one-year period, to generate that true contour, which is what you have, is an actual noise contour, as opposed to the theoretical, based on not having the ability to take into account the pattern work that the students do.
So the second question is a comparison of the current DNL contour, and the contour from 2018 is apples and oranges, because they take, can't take anything.
Yeah, and it's no disrespect to, to that firm, they're, they're a good firm, like I said, but they didn't have the sophistication to run the model accurately. So, did they run FAA's model? Absolutely. Wasn't, was it the, the official approved FAA model? Yes. Okay, but they, they just put in, put in operations and fleet mix, and the model assumed the flights come in, the flights go out. And that's, that's why you saw that, that contour. Okay, so, hope that's helpful.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a question. Talk about Deer Valley, or any of these others, did they have vacant impact zones, like you're proposing for this? I mean, I didn't see anything on those maps, but they didn't really overlay that, but do you know if they have that?
I'm not, I'm not the consultant for Deer Valley, I'm not that close to what they're, so I don't.
Robin, do you have any idea of it?
Some of the airports had a combination of impact zones and noise contours, we, we gave you the information on the noise contours. For example, Chandler has impact zones actually written into their code, into their zoning code.
Are they vacant?
Yes, the ones that toward the end of the runway are vacant. Yes, there's controls against residential in all the others, including up to the edge of the 60 DNL contour at Chandler Muni, yeah.
Thank you.
And, there were a few other items, would, may I quickly?
Go.
Go ahead, okay. So that addresses the change in methodology. There was an individual who indicated that they thought there were five different destinations that the carrier had flown to sometime back, that's not accurate. When I arrived in 2018, there were only two destinations, and the Denver destination actually stopped through Farmington, New Mexico, so it wasn't a non-stop, and then we had LA. There was a question about whether or not Emory Riddle was a for-profit, it's not, it's actually officially registered as a nonprofit institution. This was discussed with the FAA, there was an implication that maybe the FAA didn't know what we're doing here, the mayor, the city manager, and I sat with seven representatives, or five representatives of the FAA, and we did discuss with them the AVO. There was a discussion about the grant history, and Mr. Polk was correct that he didn't have all the data on the slide. We did say $50 million, and that is a combination of federal and state grants, and it's also grant commitments. Some of those show up, there was a footnote at the bottom of his slide, you'll notice it said it didn't include some monies, and that's accurate, so that didn't show all the money. The airport's only entitled as a non-hub primary airport to $1 million a year. That's why the rest of the funding for any future projects actually comes from a discretionary pot. What that means is the FAA has the discretion to issue it or not, it is not owed, it is not entitled, you have to work for it. And for every dollar that they have, you have 10 airports who want that dollar. So it is highly competitive. There was a suggestion that there were several diagrams that were shown that showed airports, that showed schools or churches next to them. You can show the same diagram of Prescott, we actually have a church in Crash Zone 1. Just showing you a picture of another community that has an incompatible use in it doesn't mean that we should follow suit, we think that that's dangerous. We didn't feel that the airports that they used were representative. Let's see. There was a question about citizen activism, in the sense that somebody's implying that an aviation easement does, takes away your First Amendment rights to speak, quite the contrary. What it does is it takes away the right to, to sue the city for air, aviation effects or impacts. There was a picture of the aviation easement from Depot Ranch that was shown, it showed you page one, and they indicated that there was no Hold Harmless, and actually the Hold Harmless is on page three, so it was not shown to you. There was an indication that they would have to sign an additional aviation easement that's never been stated or implied. And furthermore, as my presentation showed, we said we would accept the easements that had already been issued for those development communities, as well as their fair disclosure. They indicated that you have 10 days to terminate a contract or cancel a contract under the state, once you have your, once you have your preliminary title report, but knowing their sales agreement, it all says that you only have, I think, three days, or you can lose your deposit. There was an indication that this was being done, because we want to put, take away, there was a concern about taking away affordable housing. I don't think we should put poor people in crash zones. I think that affordable housing should be a factor, and we should probably put poor people or people who need affordable housing in places where they aren't potentially put in a unsafe situation. I think there's an implication here that the airport is encroaching on the community, this is an inaccurate representation. I was a little bit concerned about the hospital implications after the entirety of the presentation. I do not see where the uses that we had said could be accommodated in the site reasonably weren't going to be accommodated, and I believe the utilities were already indicated as being the city's support to bring it to the site. So I believe the hospital can still move forward. It did appear that they, there was some conflating of the Depot Ranch position with the hospital position, I respect that, but I don't think it's appropriate. There's one more thing. The final thing I do want to point out is that during the recent open houses, and actually today, what we've seen is that many citizens or entities that are within Impact Zone 6, and within the 55 and 60 DNL contours have been in attendance, despite the fact that they all, in the case of Depot Ranch, and other entities that had signed aviation easements, had signed those easements and received those disclosures, several, several of them have actively advocated for significant changes in airport and aircraft operations, including runway changes, overflight restrictions, curfews, airport closure in a couple of cases, and also relocation, and today, the shortening of a runway. This is exactly why the AVO needs to go forward. These are individuals who came in with these disclosures, with these aviation easements, and they are in front of you now, asking you to change an airport that's been in effect for more than 90 years, and that it has to be changed to accommodate people who've moved in in the last two or three years. More of them will come, and more of them will be advocates for what they feel is reducing the airport's encroachment, as they state it, and, and I'm concerned about that. I know that some public officials claim that they have no pity for aviation-impacted residents purchasing homes within established easement areas, but the activism is noted, and if city leaders ultimately decide to set aside decades of airport protection plans, it will be no surprise if future activists will inevitably emerge from the very areas that we leave protect, unprotected. So I do urge you to consider, it is not Robin's plan, it is the city's myriad of plans that have been in place for decades, that I am here to support, because that is what those plans represented, and that is what the city council called for in its strategic plan earlier this year. This is about preserving the future access to the national air transportation system. This is a regional airport, and it serves northern Arizona, and it's important to continue to protect it. And thank you for the opportunity.
What, we got some questions here. Although this was covered at the beginning of this meeting, which I think started yesterday, the FAA issue came up again. Now, just for the record, could we still clearly state this discussion of FAA and DNL at the airport as applied to the city? Because I think it was misrepresented again.
Yes, one moment. In Ms. Lichtman's presentation, she did again indicate that she felt that there was a concern. The mention of the fact that they felt that, I believe what she said is, "The Supreme Court confirmed the federal government's express preemption of the field of air safety, including noise," where it stated that the FAA has been given broad authority to regulate the use of the navigable airspace in order to assure safety and efficiency. The, the particular instance that's being mentioned here is a case of Burbank versus Lockheed Air Terminal, and in that case, they were trying to put undue aircraft access restrictions on carriers that were trying to operate out of that airport. As I had stated earlier, in the area of aircraft operating restrictions, if you attempt to put those restrictions on aircraft, then you have to put it on the rest of the community. However, it is not the same when local land use control uses those to inform decisions. In every case, folks were trying to say that safety and noise is not the same, but noise is generated only by overflight. If there's increased amount of noise, there's increased amount of aircraft overflight, and subsequently, the risk. It's important to note that when you use a layered approach like we do, that includes the impact zones, which by the way, in the hospital presentation, Zone 6 was completely omitted in the diagrams, it was in an impact zone. It's low risk, but coupled with the noise contours and the amount of overflight experienced in that area, the risk is increased, it is a safety issue. So in closing, what, in answer to your question, that in another way, the FAA says you can't prevent a flight from operating, because it might exceed your daily dose, we cannot impose access use restrictions, but we can put in noise contours and use them effectively for local land use, and that is permitted.
So in layman's language, I think what that means is, there's no ruling that says that the city of Prescott has to be the same DNL as the airport.
That's correct.
What it does say, if at 2:00 you have reached your daily DNL, and there's still flights to take off, you can't restrict taking, allowing those flights to take off unless you impose the same DNL on the city.
That's correct.
Those are completely different apples and oranges again. Thank you.
Thank you. She did make one other comment in her letter, and she indicated that she felt that the national noise study, the one that, the one that generated the newest information or research on, research on impact of noise on communities, she felt that it was an experimental study. In fact, it was not an experimental study. It was actually confirmed with a statistically significant 95% level of confidence. It was not considered experimental.
Any other question?
Yeah, Robin, do you, it's Butch Tracy. Do you, you alluded to that surveying mistake quite a few people have. Is that limited to the crosswind runway?
So what happened was that in the land use plan created back in 2008, 2009, approved by the council in 2011, the actual table that was in the land use plan was accurate. What happened is, in the diagram associated with it, it was drawn with impact zone too short. So that impacted how it showed on the maps. That was imported by Depot Ranch into its master plan and showed as part of the protections, but it was truncated as a result of it. That happened on the north end of the crosswind runway and the south end of the crosswind runway. It did not happen at the end of either of our parallel main runway and the general aviation runway.
So it wasn't an actual physical surveying mistake, then? It was, it was?
It was, it was a drawing error.
Drawing error.
And I discovered it.
I see.
Which makes me really sad.
Is that, okay.
Then I turned to Dibble, and I said, cross-verify this. And 13 cross-verifications later, we went, yeah, it was, it was a discrepancy on the drawing. But the table was correct.
All right. I think that answers it. Thank you.
Other ones? Matt?
A couple things. One, if you want more information that you weren't provided today, I think Commissioner Riley indicated he may have additional information. He wants to see, after he kind of peruses some of the documents he gets today. Email that to Katie individually. Don't CC each other to avoid the daisy chain open meeting law violation. So, and then we'll get the information to you either in this, in the next meeting, and/or we can email it to you as a total group. To the extent you want to continue the meeting, if you want to take more public comment, that's fine. You make a motion to postpone to a date certain, keeping the public meeting open, like we did the last time, or you can close the public meeting, and your next meeting will just be kind of a discussion amongst yourselves and taking a vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Tom. I think that with the presentation today of the additional options, that not only us as a commission, commissioners, but also the public hasn't had time to really kind of review them and look at them and digest the information, the new information that we were given today. Now, of course, you were given it ahead of all of us, but, you know, that makes you special. So I would move to continue the public hearing to the next...
Is it the next two weeks?
Next scheduled meeting.
Next scheduled meeting, the 27th.
We have a motion to continue. Is there a second?
I'm going to make a second, but first I want to make a comment. We're trying to make sense of this whole process. And making sense of it is working from the same set of references, and we're not working from the same set of references. Today, we've heard references to a drawing in 2018, and we've heard references to a contract in 2017. What I'd like to remind the residents here and online is that in 2015, long before 2017 and before 2018, the city was presented with a general plan that if we had adhered to the general plan, we wouldn't have had seven meetings with public input to discuss this airport. It would have been protected from the get-go. But that was just a recommendation. And so in 2017, the city council decided to change and enter into a contract. That's what we have to live with today. But it was 2015 where we had the plan right, and now we're trying to make sense of what we've inherited. So I ask you to bear with, it's not as if the airport came up with this idea a couple months ago. This idea was formed by a bunch of smart people long before 2015, because I'm part of the new general plan, and it, and we're working, we're going to work on that for three years. So with that, I second the recommendation. I second the motion, excuse me.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? If not, Kaylee, call for the vote, please.
Stan Galagoski?
Yes.
Susan Graham?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
Yes.
Tom Riley?
Yes.
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Ted Gamboji?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. We are going to be continuing this, and I want to thank you for your time on it. Anything else from staff before I close the meeting or adjourn it? Do you want to talk about the city council thing, or put that off?
Let's put that off. We can talk about it next time.
Okay. All right. If nothing else, meeting is adjourned.